...of July 21st, 2014. Roll call, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I need to report out. I can do it after roll call.
Okay.
But I wanted to remind you.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Gross?
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murky?
Here.
Mayor Graham Mihia?
Here.
So we'll go to the city attorney and report the closed session.
Thank you. The council did meet in closed session to discuss the two labor matters. No votes were taken or requested. And also to discuss a matter of threatened litigation, no votes were taken or requested.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Gross. Please remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Kusamoto.
Please join me by placing your hand over your heart and saluting the flag of our nation. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Please bow your heads. Gracious Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you for your kind blessings and riches that you have provided to our city, our state, and our nation. We ask that you be with us as we thoughtfully and diligently perform the people's work that we're entrusted to do. Please be with us as we make the best decisions for our city and our constituents. We ask you guide our state and our nation's leaders as they address the problems and issues of our global village. Please give them wisdom, courage, and strength they need to represent us and our interests. We also ask that you be a protective presence for our men and women of the police, firefighters, and soldiers that serve under the flag of the United States as they protect us and our interests both here, in the city, and abroad in the world. Please shield them with your gracious embrace and keep them from harm. In your great name.
Amen. We have a couple of presentations if the council will join me down front. Thank you all for being here and being patient. We went a little over with our closed session. First, I'd like to bring up for a certificate of recognition Brian Gorman. Brian, will you come on up?
Yep.
Give Brian a hand. He's the president of LAYB. You clean up nice. I used to see you in sports gear. Chelsea, come on up.
Chelsea.
You've got two hats.
I'm a board member and secretary for me and us.
Chelsea does a lot for the city.
She's a great girl.
So what we're doing is this is in recognition of your hard work and dedication in bringing the Bronco World Series to the city of Los Alamos. This is the second year, correct?
Correct.
Great. It was a great event last year. I would encourage all of you to go out there. So the mayor and the city council, thank you for your commitment to youth in our community and the best wishes and continued success.
Thank you very much.
Why don't you take this time to tell us a little bit about the World Series and put out that invitation?
Okay. So I'm Brian Gorman. I'm the president of Los Alamos Youth Baseball. And the World Series is August 1st through the 4th. And it's going to be right here in Los Alamos at the, next to the Joint Forces Training Facility. And we're just excited to have it here again. Last year was a great success. You guys came out and supported us, and it was nice to have the city backing us. I know that you're all going to be there this year, I hope. And right now, I just want to also announce that our Bronco 11, so our World Series is for 12-year-olds. Our Bronco 11 team, which is the one team down, are going to Virginia to play in the World Series in Virginia for the 11-year-olds. So we'll have two teams playing in the World Series this year, which is really, really exciting. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and present this to Brian, but I will say that, you know, the other groups from other countries were really organized. They had all their chants. They still yell. I don't know what's going on in Los Alamos, but those people were really quiet. So I would just say if you go, you get out there, you scream and you yell for those kids and encourage them.
That's right. So thank you once again to the council, to the city for all your support. And this World Series is here to stay until we don't want it anymore. So the city of Los Alamos is... Yeah, that's really nice. Thank you for recognizing the baseball league. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming tonight. Chelsea?
We brought you hats, by the way.
Oh, awesome.
Different hats this year.
Oh, awesome. Beautiful. Thank you so much.
And these are World Series hats.
Great.
For sale.
Brian, why don't you take a picture with us?
Okay.
Chelsea, come on up. Chelsea is very instrumental in the...
Open them on.
Open them on? All right.
There you go.
Usually gotta be bent, but you know, what are we gonna do, right?
Fix the bill.
All right. Action shot here.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Drop everything tonight.
Of course.
All right. Next up, we'd like to give a proclamation for Parks Make Life Better Month. And we have the Chair of our Commission for Parks and Rec, Pete Carvahal. Pete, will you come on up? Everybody give Pete a hand. All right. So parks and recreation make lives and communities better now and in the future. Ninety-eight percent of California households visit a local park at least once a year. Fifty percent of households participate in organized recreation programs, and most parks are used with family and friends. Residents value recreation as it provides positive alternatives for children and youth to reduce crime and mischief. Parks provide access to the serenity and inspiration of nature and outdoor spaces. So on behalf of the council and myself, Pete, we'd like to give this beautiful proclamation. How about you tell us a little bit about our parks program and all that you've been involved in?
I got the same statistics that the mayor just read off, and it said something about ninety-eight percent of people have used the parks in the last month or definitely in the last year. My question was where were the other 2%, right? It's like saying, you know, do you like the sun shining and a cool breeze on your face? Everybody loves it. The big difference being that parks, and especially in our community, take a great deal of investment, you know, from the leadership up here to the professionals that man and staff the parks. We all believe that they're a great component of what makes up a community and why we all live here and enjoy being here. And so I'm very thankful and speaking for the entire commission, very proud to accept this proclamation and appreciate all the support that the city leadership provides us. So thank you very much.
Right. Well, we're grateful because... Pete, how long have you been on the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I think about 13 years now.
So now it's time for council, yeah? He's like, don't give me any show.
This gentleman dresses up a lot better than I do.
Okay, all right. He cleans up. All right, thanks, Pete. Thanks for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you.
All right?
Right.
Oh. All right. So moving on to the next is National Night Out. If we could have the Chief of Police, Todd Mattern, please come forward. Todd, come on over here. National Night Out provides an opportunity for the Los Alamos Police Department in conjunction with the Seal Beach Police Department and our community partners to enhance crime prevention by promoting cooperative relationships and reinforcing the need for community involvement. Heightened crime prevention awareness contributes to reduce crime, drugs, and violence. The Los Alamos Police Department is committed to proving the highest degree of professional police service in partnership with the community to ensure Los Alamos is a safe place to live, visit, and conduct business. So Todd, we're going to go ahead and present you with this. And I know we have the event coming up on August 5th. Maybe you want to share with the community a little bit about it?
Sure. Sure. Well, National Night Out is an event that's going on across the country. That's why they call it National Night Out. And this year, we are partnering with the Seal Beach Police Department, and it's going to be on Tuesday, August 5th, at 6 o'clock over at the Target Center. And what it's all about is getting law enforcement in the community together so we can promote crime prevention, personal preparedness, and just strengthen the police and community relationships. So we'll be out there with some food, some display, looking forward to meeting the community members, and it should be a real nice evening.
Great, great. And I'm so excited because in the budget talks, we were talking about maybe a barbecue so the police could have the opportunity to mingle and meet you on just a even playing field. And so this is really a great option for us to do that. So thank you so much for being involved, Todd.
You're welcome. And there's some flyers in the back, too.
Great.
If you folks here will help yourself down.
Well, and free hot dogs, so you can't miss that, right? All right. So everyone, August 5th, hopefully you'll be able to come on out.
All right.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Look like that.
Oh, thank you.
Good try there, Brian.
I want a picture of us all in our hats. All right, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Is anyone interested in coming forward to speak?
I have my cards right here.
You slipped them in when I wasn't looking. All right. Shelley Henderson. Shelley, can you come forward, please? Introduce yourself, if you will.
Hello, I'm Shelley Henderson. I'm coming today as Chair of the Cypress Community Festival. As Chair of the Community Festival, I want to, first of all, emphasize community, the larger community, just as an example of that kind of community. The presentations that have already been given on National Night Out, I was down at the Seal Beach Police Department earlier today in my capacity as editor of Orange County Breathe. They announced the formation of a police foundation. The first event will be National Night Out with the Los Alamos Police Department. So that's an example of the larger community that Los Alamos is part of. As Cypress Community Festival Chair, I want to emphasize also the community to your northeast, sometimes prickly, but I want you to just come and have some fun. It is this Saturday. It starts with a run first thing in the morning. So if you are headed to Cypress, I strongly recommend that you go east to Walker before you head north. Otherwise, you will run into the Run, which goes through the middle of Cypress near the Civic Center. Immediately after the Run, the Kiwanis will be flipping pancakes at Oak Knoll Park, which is on Orange Avenue between Walker and Valley View on the south side. Opening ceremonies will be just before 9:00 a.m. in the morning. We will have two local politicians to hand out pretty pieces of paper to us in recognition of the 34th Annual Cypress Community Festival. Sharon Cork Silva is supposed to be there, and Michelle Steele in her capacity with the Board of Equalization. They have promised, cross their heart, to do no politicking while at the microphone. Immediately after the opening ceremony, the fun will start. There will be dozens and dozens of arts and crafts booths. There is the Business Expo run by the Chamber of Commerce. There is the chili and salsa competition. Be sure to get your ballot so that you can vote for your favorite chili and your favorite salsa. And there will be a big car show. Both of those last are run by the Friends of Cypress Recreation and Parks. So again, as neighbors, please feel free to drop by, have some fun this coming Saturday at Oak Knoll Park on Orange Avenue between Walker and Valley View in Cypress. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Thanks for coming. It's a great event. It's really fun. It's really large, so I encourage you, if you have nothing to do on that day and you want to get out and have some fun, head on down there. Next, we have Kyle Cramel.
I was speaking earlier. Is that how it works?
Okay. I apologize. Well, it'd have to be pulled.
He can speak now.
You can speak now. It gives you five minutes to speak.
Okay.
If you'll state your name for the record, Kyle?
Of course. Yeah, my name is Kyle Crayhel. I'm with the organization Smart Cities Prevail, we're a nonprofit that promotes prevailing wage policy information and the benefits for your community. I am speaking about item number 8F, the policy change that would get rid of prevailing wage requirements on locally funded projects. I would just request that you all consider delaying this decision to another date to allow the community to have a full discussion. It's a very important policy change that you're considering, and there are a lot of other issues involved with it that you may not be aware of. Recently passed state law, SB 7, would actually remove all state funding for your construction projects if you were to exempt yourself from prevailing wage. That's millions of dollars in state funding that you would no longer have access to. But more importantly, there's unintended consequences as well that you may not be aware of. When prevailing wage is repealed in cities, it ends up resulting in a loss of middle-class jobs first and foremost here in Los Alamos. But it would also hurt local businesses. They'd get undercut by out-of-state contractors who would come in and be able to take away those projects from our local businesses. And it also would send taxpayer money out of state. There's also other big risks and costs involved, but the benefits are really elusive. That's the thing about this, is that you may think that automatically lowering the wages on a project would save you money, but it ends up not being the case in the long run. And in fact, your staff report, it kind of illustrates that by not being able to estimate the savings. And in fact, there's also a lot of evidence that by getting rid of prevailing wage, you might actually increase costs on your projects. As an example, it's anecdotal, but my hometown of Oceanside did exempt itself from prevailing wage on a project. And that project contractor went under in the middle of the project, said he had to go to the bond company to finish it. It ended up being done a year later. We got half the project, but it was higher cost per square foot. So those are examples of things that can happen and do happen every day if you get rid of prevailing wage. So I just want to request that you delay making this decision tonight so that the community can discuss this, and we can get more information about it, and also that you consider some of the other facts such as SB 7.
Great. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Elizabeth Crane.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, Elizabeth Kane, Director of Run Seal Beach. On April 5th of this year, Run Seal Beach celebrated its ruby 40th anniversary run with 5,500 510K runners and 400 kids in our 1K event. It was a wonderful day. But what I wanted to come to share with you this evening is news about our 2014 grants as we do every summer after we've given our money away. On Monday, June 23rd, Run Seal Beach was proud to announce the following for 2014 Give Back to the Community. We awarded $149,620 in grant awards given to 64 grants of 56 organizations. We gave an additional $18,800 in director's awards to 23 grants covering 22 organizations for a total of $168,420 this year, going to 78 organizations across 87 grants. The reason we come to see you here in Los Alamos each year is because the Los Alamos Unified School District, your booster clubs, city programs, and others have been significant recipients of our funding in the last 12 years of our program. Since our inception, Run Seal Beach has now given almost $1.2 million back to the local communities, meaning Rossmore, Seal Beach, Los Alamos. Of this $1.2 million, Los Alamos organizations have benefited to the tune of $658,000 or 56% of those funds impacting thousands of your residents, students, visitors, and others who don't even know that they are impacted each day by the grants that we have given. I've included for each of you this evening a copy of our grants for full transparency of 2014. I broke it out for you to show for each of our categories of core grants and director's awards, how much of those and which organizations in Los Alamos were awarded. This same information is fully available to the public and on our website at runsealbeach.com. I also included for you, as a side note, information on a special program that was once contained here in the city of Los Alamos through the Cancer Support Foundation. As you may be aware, the Cancer Support Foundation had to close its doors in December of last year due to lack of funding. We were greatly concerned as there was a program for cancer wellness for women with breast cancer that had been funded by Run Seal Beach for a number of years. Working with the City of Seal Beach Recreation Department, we, Run Seal Beach, were able to underwrite and create a similar series of programs through the Recreation Department at a very minimal cost to the attendees of the wellness classes, allowing these women who are in recovery and who are still battling their cancer to continue with their wellness at a minimal cost. We would really like cooperation, if we could, of getting the information also to the City of Los Alamos Recreation Department, if you could help us make that information available to your citizens, that this coursework is available in the city. It's a very vital function, and we were very proud to be a part of that commitment. We would also like to support and say to Shelley that we are very excited for the Cypress 510K coming up this weekend. It is a part of the race series, of which Seal Beach, Run Seal Beach, and your Los Alamos Race on the base is a part of the series. If you run any of the three races, you get a special award for participating, and it's, again, part of this greater community outreach that we do, that the three communities participate. In closing, Run Seal Beach thanks you, Los Alamos, and this community in large, for 40 years of enduring support, and we hope that we will see everybody for our 41st annual run. We have some new news. Our actual run is changing from our springtime event to October 3rd of 2015 to coincide with our 100-year centennial activities in the city of Seal Beach. We hope we'll see you there. We thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Great job. And a special thank you for all that you do for the community. It's just amazing.
So, Madam Mayor, can I ask a question? So if you move till October, isn't the Seal Beach Triathlon at that point, too?
There has been no news on the Seal Beach Triathlon either for 2014 or 2015 at this time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, Jim Adams. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember of City of Los Alamos. My name is Jim Adams. I'm a council representative for the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trade Council. A disclaimer, I'm a 50-year resident of Orange County, currently residing in 400 block of South Camille Street in Anaheim. Our council represents affiliated construction unions whose membership exceeds 140,000 skilled, craft men and women in the construction industry. We are here today to encourage you to continue item 8F on the consent calendar regarding prevailing wage requirements on city-funded projects for the city of Los Alamos. Until such time as it takes for us to meet with staff and the city council members to meet and discuss the issue. In briefly reviewing the staff report, it appears that you are not considering construction projects at this point, and you're only talking about landscape and park maintenance. If that is the case, the building trades is okay with that, but we would still like to look at it. As long as there is no state funding, I think we could probably be good to go with it. If it's construction projects that include infrastructure projects, we respectfully would like to have an opportunity to meet with you. I can't imagine a city such as Los Alamos would even consider lowering the industry standards for your infrastructure. We believe that cities such as Los Alamos deserves only the highest quality contractors, contractors that compete on skill, safety, and efficiency rather than cutting wages, contractors that hire the necessary skilled craft workers needed for a successful completion. Prevailing wage promotes the use of local workforce over cheap labor from elsewhere. If you take the time to review the many studies that have been done, you will discover that there's no real savings in not requiring prevailing wage. There are those that will argue that there is a cost increase of 10% to 30%. However, it's difficult to take that statement seriously when total labor cost is just 21.2 of the total project cost. I have more here, but in respect for your time, we're asking you to consider continuing this item until such time as we can sit down with the city manager, city attorney, and others that are interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for your concerns. Next, we have Mark Langsford. Hi, Mark. Come on up. Mark's the owner of a new business here in town. It's really interesting.
So my name is Mark Langsfield. I own and operate Build It Workspace here at 4478 Cerritos Avenue. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and staff as well. This past week, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony at my office or my operations, and I wanted to thank you for participating in that. It went very well, and it helped get a little bit of word out. For those of you who don't know what we do, we provide services and training for folks to learn from a hobbyist level all the way to professional level. We... Here's an example of some of our capabilities, be it 3D printing. We can also do laser engraving. And from the hobbyist standpoint, it also covers sewing, and we're printing, you know, paper craft, but it also, on the professional side, we have the full Autodesk and Adobe Suite for those to keep their skills up if, for some reason, they're not employed at this time. The... I just wanted, again, to really come by and say thank you for coming out and being very supportive of us as we go through and learn more about the community ourselves. I live locally myself, and engage it more and more and tailor ourselves to serve it better. And just on a side note, this coming Thursday at 11... Sorry, at 1:00 p.m., we'll be doing a discussion on the maker movement or do-it-yourself movement, and then follow it again on Saturday at 1:00 p.m. And it's free to the public to help engage and get more feedback, also how we can improve our services. So once again, thank you.
Hey, Mark. Now, didn't you have an event on Father's Day?
Yes, we did. On Father's Day, we did build a kite with Dad. And what made that more interesting than usual, instead of just having a kit kite, we went through and took a photo. It could be with the, you know, son or daughter. And then we printed that directly onto our large format printer, and so there was immediately an image of who was there, or, you know, picked an image from somewhere else. Then the two of them worked together to cut it out of the plan. And, by the way, this was not a small kite. This was about three foot by three foot.
Yeah.
And then what added to it was the little connectors before the poles were made from the 3D printer, and then also the handle for holding the string that was made using the laser cutter engraver. And so it really personalized it, and, you know, everyone there had a good time.
Yeah. I had the opportunity to speak with your wife. You may, down the line, in the future, be having the opportunity for parties there. Is that correct?
Yes. That's what we're looking at. We're... Right now, we're bringing things online, and yes, down the line, we're looking to expand our operations.
Well, I'm signing up for that. Listen, you have to go see this facility. I mean, it's so hard to describe to you without seeing all that they can do. The 3D printer, to me, was the most amazing thing, to see it create something right there before your eyes. But I would encourage you, Mark, can you give them the address again and the name of the business?
Yes. The name of the business is called Build It Workspace, and the address is 4478 Cerritos Avenue. It's right on the corner of Lexington, the only corner that is Los Alamos.
Right, right. Well, thanks so much for coming tonight. I encourage you all to go by, at least look at what they have to offer. It's far more than Mark can even express to you. He can show you some of the things that they've done. It's really amazing.
And I've also brought some flyers I could leave out front or here. I don't know.
Why don't you leave them out in the front, and then that way they can pick them up on the way out?
Okay.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi. My name is Jason Krupkula. I am a resident of Carrier Row, and I'm here with some of my neighbors and on behalf of many, many more, of which I have over 100 signatures, to voice our displeasure of the last two years of the fireworks event. I remember 12 years ago, when I moved to this neighborhood, my neighbor said, hey, this is your first 4th of July, huh? I said, yeah. He said, wow, you're really in for something. I live on Howard and Midway, so we're pretty much one of the homes that's adjacent immediately to where the fireworks were. When that first round of cannons went off, I really knew, wow, I made a good move moving to this neighborhood, because 4th of July, to all of us, is probably the coup de grâce, the biggest event of the year. And it always has been, up until the last couple of years, when you guys, well, I don't say you guys, but the powers that be moved the event for whatever reason it needed to be moved. And we'd just like to come forward and say, hey, you know, we'd like to have it moved back. It's always, like we said, it's been an event that's really brought the whole community
many, many more, of which I have over 100 signatures, to voice our displeasure of the last two years of the fireworks event. I remember 12 years ago, when I moved to this neighborhood, my neighbor said, hey, this is your first, Fourth of July, huh? I said, yeah. He said, wow, you're really in for something. I live on Howard and Midway, so we're pretty much one of the homes that's adjacent immediately to where the fireworks were. When that first round of cannons went off, I really knew, wow, I made a good move moving to this neighborhood because Fourth of July, to all of us, is probably the coup de grâce, the biggest event of the year. And it always has been, up until the last couple of years, when you guys, well, I don't say you guys, but the powers that be moved the event for whatever reason it needed to be moved. And we'd just like to come forward and say, hey, you know, we'd like to have it moved back. It's always, like we said, it's been an event that's really brought the whole community together. I've had people from other neighborhoods and from deeper in the neighborhoods come and just camp out on my lawn that I didn't even know. The last couple of years have just been not that at all and it's kind of disheartening to our neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Well, you want to go ahead and give that to city manager? And that's a petition? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of an impromptu thing that we just signed. Neighbors and friends that were there on the Fourth, we kind of put this together on the Fourth and said, hey, you know, this is the second year of this just not really being good.
Okay.
We wanted to do something about it, so we brought it forward to you on this first meeting after the Fourth.
Perfect, perfect. And we appreciate you doing all this work, gathering these signatures. Anyone else?
My name's Robert Graham. I live basically in the same neighborhood and I remember when I was a kid, we used to be able to light fireworks off here in Los Alamos. And our learned city council, thinking about safety, took that away from us. But they put on such a great fireworks display on the base that, you know, we learned to live with that loss and embrace the gain. But over the last couple of years, in fact, I was so disheartened this year. My girl here and I, we like to hop on our beach cruisers and ride through the neighborhood and it was always so lively and you meet so many people that you wouldn't normally meet. And I'm talking from Los Alamos Boulevard all the way to the end of Dutch Haven, which is basically the entire city along the southern border of the base. We rode it this year on our bikes and it was like a ghost town. Everybody was so disheartened from last year, really couldn't see them. And from my understanding of the past, when we were talking about budget and can we afford it, Kenny Brandebury stood up here and pulled a $15,000 check out of his pocket to make From what I understand, Los Alamos pays the lion's share of this event, this fireworks display, yet we don't get the benefit. It's over in Garden Grove and part of Cypress and Seal Beach. There's not a whole lot of people happy about it and I don't see where it would be a monetary thing to move it back where it was. I mean, it's just a matter of setting the stage. And hopefully you guys can address that and fix that and bring back the celebration, which, like he said, you know, it is the premier event in this city. It's where everybody gathers to celebrate our independence. Once a year, one day a year, where we all get together and everybody are friends. And in the community, you can't beat that. From safety to friendships to large gatherings, which the city always has, you know, now we have the new Sugar Beet Festival. You know, the word gets around that those events are out there and they just get bigger and bigger and bigger, the more people that you come in contact with. And Fourth of July is that day. So respectfully, I say move the fireworks and the display back to where it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Please state your name for the record.
Tom von Hofgarden, 4702 Howard. You, I've already talked to a couple of you, you know how we feel on this and it's just ridiculous. I know they were working in front last year and it wasn't perfect, but that building's done. They can put them back, costs nothing. Five years ago, they lowered them. Now you move them a quarter mile out, can't see them, don't move them back up. And the tradition, everything, like I said, it's gone, it's shot. And if this is the best you can do with the money you got, then let's go safe and sane and let the kids make money for their sports or tell the community you can't afford it and you'll get donations. But that's a waste of all of our money. That's a joke. Absolute joke. I don't think you'll see too many people come up here and tell you that they loved it and it's better now than it was. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you. Can you state your name for the record?
My name's Peter Cassis. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Chief. And I'm here too. I've been a resident for Los Alamos for the last five years. And the last three years, my house, I'm not complaining, was bombarded and they were right too because it was an event. It's a very special event and I have a five-year-old son too and he was pretty disappointed because I held him up as high as I could on my backyard. I live on Howard Avenue too and we really couldn't see it. There were the buildings, the military keeps building more buildings in front of us, which is fine, they need to do what they need to do, but we can't see it. And one of the biggest things was the last two years, last year, this year, I had less people come to my house. And we're talking, I'm not talking about 100 people showing up in my house, we're talking about, you know, 20, 25 people and I had 15 people show up. I had two things of pulled pork. I had so much food left over, nobody wanted to come over. Not because they didn't want, it just wasn't fun anymore. It wasn't worth the drive. It wasn't worth the whole thing. It was really special. It was a neighborhood gathering and it was a lot of energy. It was positive energy. And I, five years, I haven't seen one structure damaged, I haven't seen any fires, I haven't seen anything. The fire trucks are camped right in front of our house too. The girls in my house, they all love watching the firemen. If it wasn't the military guys, they loved watching the firemen. The fire trucks are not even there. So I too, here as a resident of Los Alamos, wanted to have the fireworks brought back. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Please come to the podium. State your name for the record.
First of Leonard, last of DeLeon, live in 4612 Howard Avenue. And I'm with these guys. The pleasure of it's gone, it's not the same as it used to be. We used to have up to 70 people in my house alone, pure relatives. Last two years, we haven't done that much. It hasn't been as fun. The fireworks are farther away. Again, we have problems with the buildings. If the base wants to build buildings, let them have it. They could more or less do whatever they need. The fact is, it's setting a setback on us because, again, wind conditions this year for my house, very few of the fireworks that we saw. Side of that, it's going downhill. If you want to have it, it's up to you, it's up to the surrounding cities if they want to continue it. But from the way it's looking, it's not looking good. And if it's going to continue that, you know what? Let us have our own fireworks back. Let us have our kids do what they want in our own yards. Other than that, it doesn't seem too good. The base is making money. If it's not the base, it's the surrounding cities. I understand the base cannot claim any of the money because it's a government institution. But the surrounding cities, they're making fantastic amounts of money. The surrounding cities. I don't see Los Alamos making too much money. We're losing it. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much for paying attention.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Please state your name for the record. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Carmen DeLeon and I live in Los Alamos for the last 48 years. And I'm living just across from the, all these things happening. That's the thing for myself. All my cousins, they come from Lancaster, over there from the desert, and Salamonica, South Gate, and they are elderly people, all this deny. So most of the time, we have fun. All around in the house, around 70 people, like my son says, because I'm Michael Leonard. So lately, they can even come in because they says, we don't going to see nothing, just to come on and see you, but that's the fun. Everybody were getting some food and we have fun because it's once a year I was meeting them, I mean, together. So last year and this year, my kids and my grandkids, we missing all those things. There's some nice music and the gathering all over there, sitting the people over there on the hard floor, should I say that? Rather, we are singing and sitting just from my house right in there because I live close to town, maybe about a six hours away, sort of. So we have hard time to watch it. So my son, I said, what are we going to do? Also, we are renting those one of the things, you know, the tents.
Oh, the bounties.
And chairs and all those things because we have a beautiful time, 70 people in the 70s too.
Yeah.
So all these things are gone because they says, they're not fair, coming from all those far places to don't see nothing.
Right.
Because we could see on the, during the year, we could see in each others, but not this kind of family gathering. I don't care about the money for the cities and this and that, no, there's more, to me, there's more family matters. So I hope you understand because all of us, we have families. There's something don't cost to us. Just bring some cakes and food and plenty, so I miss them. That's my concern.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much and I thank you for your time.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Clarissa Tucker. I also live on Howard in Los Al. I've lived here almost my whole life and I left California for a couple of years and came back this year to the most disappointing fireworks show that I've seen here ever. I too have family that come down from Bakersfield and from far away and I ended up really apologizing and feeling really bad for them this year. Again, we'd like it moved back where it belongs.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone wishing to speak? If I could, Doug, can we pan to the audience? Can I have a show of hands of those of you who are here for the Fourth of July issue? Okay, great. All right, well, thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you for the petition, letting us know how everyone's feeling about the fireworks show. If we don't know, we can't work on it, so without your help, we wouldn't be able to do anything. And we'll address this at a council level and see if we can't do something to remedy the problem. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Oh, we do have one more speaker, I'm sorry. Please state your name for the record.
Jay M. Iveler and I'd like to thank Councilmember Gross for inviting me down tonight. I wasn't planning on being here.
Welcome back.
Ta-da.
You know, I wasn't going to talk about the fireworks issue. I do live in the area as well. I had over 50 people over and everyone complained. Second year, I know that Mayor Mahia, you did your best to try to change things and clearly it didn't work and you have an entire community upset. Hopefully, we can fix that and move it back to where it was and then my 50 guests will be happy. I think they're happy with the food, but I think they really missed the fireworks. Actually, the reason I came here tonight was because I wanted to say the city and the city council are working. Everyone talks about us versus them or the two sides. I've been hearing that for a long time, as most of you have. Recently, the pool had a situation where they lost one of the items they use at the end of each session. It's called the rock and it was eaten by rats in storage. So the kids at the end of the session don't have the rock to play on. A number of the people who work at the pool started talking about raising money for it and they came to me and asked me to help. And I called somebody who I basically called on once before to help and he came through with the fireworks. So I gave him a call and he admits he's on the other side. But we had wonderful conversation. We talked about the things that we are doing, their side and their side, to make the city better, the fact that the council is working together, that things are good. And he really was very positive and supportive about trying to do something to help. And I appreciate Kenny for everything he did, even though apparently the pool youth who were, or the employees who are working there, were unable to raise the funds that they wanted to raise to pull it together. Hopefully, we will get that item back because the kids who are attending the lessons really do love the rock. And hopefully, that will come back. I kept on being reminded throughout the week, whether it was Mr. Gross teasing me about not coming because I said I was going to take a month off, or whether it be talking to Kenny and trying to solve problems, or watching the city council, and I realized we're about to enter crazy season. We already have a website up that's attacking Councilmember Kusamoto. We've already got some of the craziness already beginning. Please, let's try to have an election without personal attacks, lies, innuendo, threats, and all the craziness. Let's kind of do something different for a change, like Kenny and myself trying to work together, like you guys working together. Let's actually just have a nice, clean electoral season. I know it's a lot to ask, particularly since other, one group's already out there hammering away, but I would really like to see a change. The change I've seen in the council has been absolutely wonderful. I'd like to see it continue. Let's make the election season really clean this year. No innuendo, no attacks, no lies, no mailers sent to every house that are filled with BS. And I hope that the best people win, no matter which side they're on. I just want it to be clean. Thank you very much for your time and move the fireworks.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close oral communications, move on to register of major expenditures. Do I have a motion?
Almost.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Graham Mahia.
Aye. Moving on to item number eight, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon in one motion unless the council member requests a separate action on a specific item. Does anyone want to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item D and if staff's not going to do it, I'd also like to pull item F.
All right. Anyone else?
I'll move the balance.
All right, I'll second that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go to item 8D. Could we get a brief staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item is before you for consideration of adoption of a resolution establishing salaries and benefits for non-represented employees. And the proposal that's in front of the council that was included in your consent calendar is for a salary and benefits increase for the non-represented group to reflect a 1% increase and set compensation at the step in range, 1% higher than it is right now, and including an increase in benefits. The salary and benefits resolution also provides non-represented employees with $50 per month increase in the allowance for insurance benefits. There are also some other minor changes in the resolution that's included in the packet, including a change to reflect the new PEPRA or Public Employees Pension Reform Act of 2013, in which all employees hired after January 1st, 2013, new to the retirement system, are required to contribute 50% of the normal cost to the retirement plan and the formula has been reduced for safety and miscellaneous employees and it's no longer based on the single highest year of compensation. All of that is reflected in the resolution that's included in the packet and consideration for approval by the city council tonight.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back. Dean, you pulled this item. Would you like to go first?
As long as you mentioned Section 25 and retirement. When we approved this group the last time, and it took us a couple of sessions to do it, did we not bring this group into line where they're all paying their full PERS?
Yes, that's correct. All the employees that were in the existing group at that time are paying the full 8% of the PERS for miscellaneous and 9% in the case of safety.
And any new are doing the same thing?
New employees, if they're under PEPRA, which is after the January 1st, 2013, would be paying half of the normal cost as required in the new PERS law. So there's a different definition, a different cost-sharing formula for those employees that are hired after January 1st, 2013. Half of the normal cost is what they're picking up and half of the normal cost is what the city is picking up.
And how long does that last?
That's the new law. So...
So any new, any employees that are hired in the system that are considered new employees by PERS, which includes either brand-new into the system or an employee that has been separated from the PERS system for more than six months, are required to pay half the normal cost.
Okay. And essentially, that's what the existing force is doing, correct?
The existing force is paying the full 8% of the PERS. And I can have the interim Director of Administrative Services explain the way the formula is right now.
And I'm equally confused because the new people coming in are paying their share, which is basically half, and the city matches the, another half. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, let me have Glenn explain what the normal cost is, the definition of the normal cost under PEPRA, and compare that to what the existing employees are paying right now.
Yeah, they actually are two different things. So let me start with what are known as classic employees, not PEPRA but classic. There's an employee contribution and there's an employer contribution. The employee contribution is fixed by law, never changes. 8% for miscellaneous, 9% for safety, never changes. What changes is the employer contribution every year and it's based upon an actuarial study that's done each year by PERS. The rate can be much higher than the amount that's being paid by the employees for the employee contribution. When they went to the new PEPRA law, there isn't really no such thing anymore as employee contributions and employer contributions. They took the total rate, which is the normal cost, and they said the employer's gonna pay half of it and the employee's gonna pay half of it. For the first three years of the PEPRA law, it's an estimate as to what 50% of the normal cost is. So the employees for the first three years are just paying an amount based upon an estimated normal cost. They will then do an actuarial study, just like they do for the classic member employees, and they will then set what the normal rate should be in the fourth year and beyond and we will get an actuarial report each year for the PEPRA employees, just like we do for the classic employees. And as Brett said, that's from now on. That's in perpetuity that the PEPRA employees will pay 50%. After January 1st, 2018, you can get the classic employees to pay more than the employee contribution. It used to be, that was the limit. You couldn't get employees to pay more than that. That's no longer the case. You can get employees to pay more. Whether cities do that or not, that's up to each individual city. But in order to get them to pay 50%, it would be a lot higher for safety than what they're paying now and it would be 3% to 4% higher for miscellaneous.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yep, got two others. Section 27, education reimbursement. When we did the agreement with POA, which is another area where the city allows a reimbursement on education, we added a section this year that hadn't been there before, that the employee had to agree to continue employment with the city for five years. And if they opted to end their employment earlier than that, they had to pay a percentage back to the city for the advance that had been given to them for education. This, it was brought to my attention on the warrants, that we had a mid-management person that we approved tonight on warrants getting a reimbursement. I do not see that clause as part of section 27 and I would like to request that the language be added to section 27 so that it is comparable to what we did with the POA.
All right.
And I have one other question further on and I'm assuming that this went to the city attorney. Section 30 talks about construction. And it appears to be more boilerplate than anything, but I'm not sure what that means when we say "construction."
May I?
Yes, please.
Construction is, it's, there's such a thing as statutory construction and what that means is how you interpret a law. This is how you interpret the resolution. And so this is for things like, you know, subsection A, nothing in this resolution shall be construed to deny any person or employee the rights granted by federal and state laws. It is boilerplate and it is just, it, construction means interpretation.
I guess in my experience with contracts, that's usually a waiver and that no part of it, if one part of it's found wrong, you can't, doesn't affect the rest of it type of a thing. So it was a new term that I didn't hear, so.
Right, and waiver could be part of construction. It could have been included in here. You know, that's one of the things that comes under construction.
Okay. I'll move approval with the addendum that the language in section 27 be changed to reflect comparable language that we had in the POA agreement.
Okay, so let's bring in the rest of the council. Troy?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. City manager, question I have, refresh my memory, we had talked about a lot of the union contracts and we've, we had agendized nonrepresented in closed session two, is that correct?
In closed session, we have in past, yeah, the past two council, regular council meetings before tonight, we did.
Okay. And the, one thing that was kind of hard for me looking through this is that right away, I go to the fiscal impact on page 2 of 2 of the staff report and it just says, hey, look, it's 10,000 to 15,000 if you make these changes. But then I kind of go in and I'm just trying to make sure, you gave a summary and you said, hey, look, couple of the base tables changed 1% up, some of the benefits, specifically you pointed to, I think, the medical increase and potentially this education issue. One of the issues that I had questions on is section 5, salary ranges. We start talking about the salary survey and we've put a lot of dependency as a council on this salary survey in the future. Quite honestly, Brett, we hired you at a good rate, knowing that we would need to benchmark you. My question for the council and for you is, on page four of 18, items two through four start to prescribe the criteria for the assessment of the salary view. And my question is, this is the first time that I've seen a criteria laid out that may or may not be appropriate for the salary evaluation. We haven't done a commission yet to start that salary survey that I'm aware of and are we already setting the criteria here? Should we be concerned about it?
This particular language has not changed from, the resolution was adopted back in January 1st, 2013, which is the last time the council had made modifications. That was at the time that the council had reflected the nonrepresented that were employees at the time began to pay their full 8% for miscellaneous and 9% for safety. This was used, the nonrepresented salary range, section 5 was used to do evaluations of two positions that are in the nonrepresented right now. So we have used this, but this is not a modification from what has been done in the past.
Do we, because I can't remember, do we point in any of the other union or labor negotiation contracts the same wording? Are we consistent with this?
The exact wording I do not believe is in the POA or in the CEA, the Police Officers' Association or the City Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding. The nonrepresented are literally the management and executive employees in the group that are nonrepresented. They do, they are not in an association, so they're, it's a slightly different animal between this and the Police Officers' Association and this and the CEA. I don't think we use that exact language for survey.
Yeah, I guess my point specifically is that I would be interested before I set a criteria to know, I, as Rich said, I'd like to know the answer before, you know, in a couple of different ways. And the what-if scenario, specifically item number two, looking at the number of cities, less than 30, you know, is the sample set big enough? You know, people that are smarter than us, which is all the staff that know this because we don't get into the details, may already know what the story is if it's that criteria. I guess I personally am not comfortable with it being in here because I wouldn't want to have, even if we've done it in the past and I just caught it now, I just don't want to prescribe a criteria until I kind of know what the answer ends up being, whether that sample set is big enough. And to be quite honest, Brett, it has a significant effect in when, you know, we graciously were able to get you to come on board. I want it to be fair and I don't know if this is wide enough. That's one point.
Troy, just for reference, what page were you?
It's on page four of 18.
Okay, and what item was it?
Two at the top.
Items two. And it gets into a little bit of detail. The other one, I, the employee contract, section 10. It says, "In order to be eligible for the benefits provided under this resolution, prior receipt of such benefits, each nonrepresented employee must execute an employment agreement in a form approved." Didn't we have a situation with employment agreements? So can, I just wanted to get clarity on, what does this mean? Are we doing ourselves a problem here or is this, maybe I'm misinterpreting this?
We have employee contracts right now with executive staff-only department heads. We have employee contracts within the nonrepresented group. We do not have contracts and we actually had rescinded contracts for the management employees that are in the nonrepresented group, mid-management employees.
So what does that mean? Is this?
This is, this just applies for the executive staff. Todd, can you, does this happen a little bit before my time? Can you clarify what we went through? You were familiar with this at the time, just briefly.
I didn't see the language that you're talking about, but you are, that is language that was in the resolution before that did require all employees that were, that were in the nonrepresented group and yes, we made a change to that.
Yeah.
So now it would only be the executive.
But this is for all nonrepresented, right? Including lower level than just executive and not to argue with a guy with a gun, but I just want to make sure, I think this doesn't belong in there because we already had this disagreement before.
I think you're right.
Yeah, so.
You are correct. I think we should remove it.
If we, just, section 15, holidays. So this is a math problem for me is if you look at this, you see 11 vacation days and then you see 18 hours, which is about two and a half holidays, are you there? Down below that, it says each employee shall accumulate no more than 18. It goes a little bit further and says if their holiday falls on a nine-hour day, they'll get paid nine hours if you're working a 980. So a 980, again, they're working five days one week, you know, nine hours and then the next week, they're working four days. So theoretically, somebody that's on a 980, if the holidays actually fall on the days that they would be, they would actually accumulate, even on the regular holidays, they could potentially accumulate another day or two of holiday in hours that they would get paid on a nine-hour day. Are you guys with me? So the issue that we have is on a 980, you know, it seems like you would, you're actually getting more authorized holiday days than what we actually say here because, you know, you're actually getting nine. It kind of supersedes itself and there isn't a, I guess we can call it an extra floating holiday, but it looks to be about, you know, one to two extra days. And again, I only get worried about this because these types of agreements go across a lot of different people. This isn't like a special treatments clause. So it seems like that didn't seem very clear and maybe that's what we're doing in all of our contracts and I didn't pick it up till now. What's your perspective?
And you're talking in section 15, holidays, for employees working a 980 schedule, all regular holidays shall be nine hours for holidays falling on Monday through Thursday and eight for holidays falling on Friday. That is, the 980 schedule, employees on the 980 schedule work nine hours. It's a 7:30 through 5:30, it's a nine-hour day. So if the holiday falls on a nine-hour day, the employee gets credit for that nine-hour holiday. If it, holiday falls on a Friday in which city hall is open and the employee would be working eight hours, it's an eight-hour.
Let me just, I'll ask the more intuitive question because I got that. The part, has staff went through and done the math to find out, are we actually providing kind of quasi an extra day or two because of the nine-hour day issue? Because it's the same number of holidays, just some of them are nine, some of them are eight, so theoretically, you're given more than eight hours a day. And the employee accrues based on the policy, but we're paying based on actual hours worked. There's a disconnect there. Does anybody have any idea?
Glenn, have you, we've gone through, I don't know, we've actually gone back and done an analysis of each individual day, but in terms of each day being nine hours and credit for nine hours if it's a holiday that falls on that day when they would normally be working, I don't think there's an additional, additional hours that are being.
Is everybody on the 980?
Not everyone is on the 980. We have some.
It's a parity issue. Some that are working five days a week, eight hours a day, take that same day off and get eight hours. Again, I just think theoretically, it ends up mathematically being off. And I would just ask, I'm with Councilmember Gross, I, you know, directionally, I'm going with this, but I think we need to tighten it up to make sure that we're giving the right number of holidays and we're being fair to everybody.
If I may? So to address Councilmember Edgar's, I brought this up the last time this came around and mathematically, the employee that works a 980 schedule has a fair shot at getting overcompensated for their holidays, just mathematically, because holidays typically fall Mondays, which would be a 980 day. So unless there's a correction somewhere in the system, which there is not in the MOU, they will get nine hours of compensation on those holidays that fall in their day. And just, in a given year, they may end up one or two or maybe three hours ahead of their peers that do not work 980 days. There's just no correcting factor in the MOU and that's how it exists. I brought that up and it didn't get addressed before, so it's, I guess when you tally up all the holiday pay, it's very clear to see how much they get. It's just simple math. Nine hours on these days and eight hours on the others, so.
So I, like I said, I want to be able to, I'm on board with most of this. I just, I don't know how you fix this tonight, but it seems like we need to do a little bit of work on that. See if there's anything else. No, I think, I think that's it. Thank you, ma'am.
Richard, anything?
Fine.
Okay. So what is the council's wish? Do we want to pull this item and fine-tune it and bring it back or do we want to try and make these corrections tonight? There was one from Dean regarding the education. I'm on board with that for reasons of parity. I think that it's easier for us when we go into contract negotiations if everybody's along the same line. Troy, you had some issues, you know, the cost increases of the salary ranges and what kind of a financial hardship might that play on the city? You wanted to remove from section 5, number two, I apologize, I don't, in my notes, I didn't write down what that was. Also, then the contract question with.
Section 10.
Section 10, contracts with only the executives and remove anybody that is not an executive from that inclusion in that section, correct?
Clarify the wording.
Okay.
One way or the other.
And then the section 15, the holiday pay. For me, I just don't know how we would go about, it seems unfair to me that if someone works a nine-hour day and that holiday comes up, we're gonna dock them an hour that they normally would be making. I understand what you're saying and Warren did bring that up in the past regarding the extra hours. It'd be interesting to know how many hours that is and if it's not significant, if it's days, well, then that's definitely something maybe we want to look at, but if it's just a couple of hours at the end of the year, for myself, I'm comfortable with it the way it is. So what's the recommendation of the council?
I trust that the staff could fix this if we just gave them direction to do that. I personally have confidence that this could be remedied if this, I guess, I've looked at Brett though before, I'd be okay with that and say, Brett, do you recognize this is a, an issue that we can work through? And if he says yes, then I would probably be on board.
I think we can work through, yeah, the education, including comparable language to what's in the POA for the proration if someone leaves early. Section 5, which is the salary survey, can be taken out and brought back at another time for consideration.
Well, that's my question.
Right now.
If it's not something we can address. If it's not something we can address right now, should we?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I am one hundred and fifty percent behind a salary survey, because we made some commitments on that before. I just don't want to be specific on the criteria. I'd like to see the details of that come to us as a council agenda in the future when we're getting ready to do it, so we can agree, what is the criteria, what are some of the potential, you know, population sets that come out of that type of criteria, so that we're fair. And I don't know exactly what that means, on whether you just taper the wording back and say something to be determined.
Yeah, we could bring it back, if you're suggesting bringing it back at a later time. We could bring it back at a later time, leave it now. We don't have, it's not applicable right now, but we did use this, for example, for the administrative services director position, and we have two tiers, a tier one and a tier two. It was very beneficial in going out and surveying the market for that.
Sure.
In terms of using these cities, we use that criteria. It worked very well. It enables recruitment, hopefully enhancing the potential of getting a good candidate. We did also use it for another position, and actually lowered it. So we've used it twice.
Yeah.
I think successfully. We could keep it in, and then bring it back at a later time.
The last thing I'll say on that is that the criteria, as put here, is so simple. Imagine if you're in our seat, and we need to go back to the community and say, we need to give a pay raise to somebody. If we already know what the answer is, then why do a pay survey if it's this simple? I think it needs to be more comprehensive and evaluate, because I think there's too much at stake, and trying to convince the community that we're doing the right thing, I think really deserve to have a specific discussion on that.
All right. And then, Brett, the other was section ten, the contracts. I think you're clear on that.
Yeah, that's, we can, we will modify that language to correct that.
And then section fifteen, with the holiday pay, what do you think needs to be addressed with that?
Maybe I can turn over to Glenn, any ideas on that, in terms of the analysis for that?
My answer to that question would really be based upon what was done before employees went on alternate work schedules. My only familiarity with this is what was done in the city I used to work for, and they don't do it the same way in this city. And that was, when employees went from five, eight-hour days a week, and got eight hours for each holiday that fell during the year, and we went to a nine plan, and they got nine hours for holiday, what we did was, we said that when a holiday falls on their Friday day off, they don't get anything, because they already get the day off. And when I compared the hours that they were getting under the nine plan versus what they used to get under the five-eight plan, it was only like, on average, three hours a year more than they used to get under the five-eight plan. But that was because, once in a while, they didn't get anything for a holiday when it fell on their Friday day off. In this city, when it falls on their Friday day off, they get the previous day as holiday. So they don't lose that holiday pay when a holiday falls on their Friday day off. So my guess is, over the course of a year, it's probably going to be somewhere between eight and ten hours more over the course of a year on average than what they got under the five, eight-hour days.
That's how I got to the one-point-two days.
Right, right, okay. All right. So Brett, that's something that I think the council is interested in addressing. So can we move forward with this, or do we need to bring it back?
We can move forward with it, and bring back the holiday for discussion at a later time, or, I mean, I don't, we don't have a modification right now that we can make.
Well, I mean, Glenn actually has, I've seen it done that way in companies, and I've also seen they adjust floating holidays based on it, too. So, you know, I mean, mathematically easy to fix, I just want to know where it is, you know? If Fridays are zero pay, then add that in the wording, and then you're done. If it, you know, the mayor seems to be viewing, and I'm not totally against it, is if it's marginal, you know, and manageable, it might be something. But, but again, I keep thinking, what if I was that guy working five hours or five days a week, and I can't go to a nine-eighty schedule for some reason? I'm not treated completely equal. Three hours to a lot of people is a lot, you know? So anyway.
And if I may chime in, Councilmember, so I think the other part we have to look at, and it's the people's money. And so, we're paying money for not services rendered, so I think that's the thing to be really mindful of, because where I work, what we do is that, on those days that are holidays, I only get eight hours of pay, and I have to take a day of vacation, or I'll have to make it up during the weekend, work that extra hour. So that's how my employer takes care of the nine-eighty days that fall on those kind of holidays. So we only get eight hours of pay, so there are ways to address this.
Well, it sounds.
I would encourage the city to look at that, and remember, this is the people's money.
Right. And we have a couple of recommendations. We have what Glenn brought forward, what Warren's mentioned, so maybe we can go ahead and entertain a motion on this, with the caveat that we want to address that at a later council meeting. Carrie?
Or if the council's ready to vote on that provision, you can vote on that, so that we can prepare a new resolution that takes that into account. Councilman Kusamoto, sounds like he's making a motion to?
I think Councilmember Gross had a motion, so.
Okay.
Dean?
Then let me try and restate it, and see if I catch everything. I had moved for approval with the additional language on section twenty-seven, comparable to other MOUs and agreements with labor, with eliminating section ten, because I think the department heads are dealt with separately by contract anyhow, so.
We, the section ten would be modified to say executive staff, and that's really what it's applicable to at this point, is the executive, the department heads.
Except this whole agreement has nothing to do with department heads.
It does. Yeah, they're in the group. Yeah, the non-represented includes department heads. They're in this non-represented group.
All right. Then doing that, correcting section ten, on section five, specifically section two, we're going to bring that back for further discussion on.
Salary range?
On the salary section, or is that the hourly section, on section fifteen for the holidays? Try to bring back something that's more, that's fair and equitable from the standpoint of the employees and the city.
Do you have a second?
Anything else? I think that's all of it.
And the salary, section five, taking that out, and bringing that back at a later time as well.
Are we talking five-B-two, or all of section five?
I think we were talking just five-B-two.
Five-B-two, yeah, it's.
To bring back a better definition on that at a later time. Does that cover everything?
That's all in my notes.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Moving on to item eight-F, can we get a brief staff report?
Yeah, this item is, is on the agenda for consideration of exemption from prevailing wage. We did have the public comments that were related to this item. Steve Mendoza can give a brief staff report. We'll also have our city attorney, Carrie Reisman, talk about any legal implications of this, and the research that we've done on this particular item.
Okay. And before we do that, if we could, Carrie, some of the items that were brought up earlier by the speakers, if you could address those.
I'm ready to do that, but Stephen will give the background first.
Right, I'm just saying.
Can I ask a question? Do we need to do that, if I want to make a motion, that we just bring this matter back, allowing staff time to do further research on it?
We have, I have done research. I've done sufficient research, so that I'm prepared to give an opinion. So you can make that motion, but if council would like to hear what Mr. Mendoza has to say.
Go ahead with your, your report and his research.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Since nineteen, I'm sorry, since 2012, case law has supported charter cities who want to exempt themselves from California prevailing wage law. The City of Los Alamos has not taken advantage of this cost savings tool that's available to itself as a charter city. The issue for us began earlier this year, when we started talking about the maintenance of the future new park that will be coming on, and the reasoning of adding additional employees. So we thought we may want to consider developing an RFP to contract out some of the services that we have in the city regarding park maintenance, landscape maintenance, indoor center medians, the parkways, those kind of issues. As a cost-saving alternative, the superintendent and I suggested that the city attain that pricing via a request for proposal. The request for proposal for those services can't be done until we tackle the issue of prevailing wage, and we wanted to make sure that the issue was solidified before we went out to bid, in order to give council some options in pricing for those services in the future, versus having more employees or contracting out the service. Our cost-saving alternatives here do not include building any buildings. We haven't built a building in Los Alamos since I've been aware of. We're not interested in building bridges. Usually, when we build, do construction projects, such as the Alley Project you proved earlier in the agenda, that is funded by CDBG, and that requires prevailing wage. Most of the projects that Dave Hunt bids out, either through CDBG funding or Gastac funding, is prevailing wage jobs. This is a service, not a construction project. And with that, I would recommend the city council move forward on this item, pending some discussions that the city attorney has to add at the end of my report.
City attorney?
Yes, thank you. SB seven was adopted effective January first this year by the legislature. You know, looking back in my old emails, I found one from Councilmember Gross from over a year ago, when it was first proposed. The League of California Cities vigorously opposed it. It was adopted anyway. And what it says is that, in the event a city uses, or doesn't use prevailing wage, exempts itself from prevailing wage for contracts of a certain size, over $25,000 for construction contracts, over $15,000 for other types of contracts, that city puts itself at risk of losing government assistance, state government assistance, state grants, and so forth, which, you know, it's pretty serious. However, there is a lawsuit by several cities, local cities, fourth district, court of appeal cities, that's actually going to trial on July 31st, challenging that as being unconstitutional under the California Constitution. Furthermore, be aware that even under SB seven, any contracts entered into this year, any existing contracts, any contracts entered into before December 31st are exempt. So if you bid out a project tomorrow, or next month, or anytime up until December 31st, and you exempt yourself from paying prevailing wage under this proposed resolution, you're not, that's not going to impact the city. It's not going to result in the loss of any state funds or anything like that. And if, you know, so long, even if the contract is for construction services or other services to be performed next year, so long as it's entered into before the end of this year, it's exempt. So that's, you know, that's pretty much where it's at. The city can adopt this, and then, towards the end of the year, you can modify it to make sure that we don't get impacted next year for new projects. And perhaps, in the meantime, the lawsuit that's going to trial on July 31st will have been resolved, and we'll know more about, you know, what's going to happen, whether it's legal or illegal, whether SB seven is constitutional or unconstitutional. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
All right. Bring it back to the council. Anyone like to ask any questions? Troy?
City attorney, does that imply, then, that this, notwithstanding that the court case gets folded over, this really would be something kind of similar to our discussion earlier. This would be something we would pass, it would only be good until December 31st, and then legally, we'd have to switch it back anyway?
You may have to switch back for future contracts, depending on the result of the court case. And you might want to modify it to say, contracts under $25,000 are exempt from prevailing wage, under $15,000, you know, as I mentioned, because those are exemptions in the statute itself. So, yeah, you probably would want to bring it back, unless the court throws out SB seven.
What's your prediction on that?
I think it's, there's a good chance that they will, but, and I've been in touch with one of the attorneys who's handling that. They're, they are optimistic, but you never know.
All right. Let's let Troy finish. Troy, do you have any?
Yeah, I guess, sure, I, you came in representing the trades, right? Correct? And, you know, I own a couple of companies. One of them is a construction company, and we do underground construction that tears up streets or highways, and go under, sometimes we do county work or other stuff, where we actually get paid prevailing wage, but we are not unionized, so we don't have the benefits of the prevailing wage. I definitely appreciate that it does reserve the, you know, really good people to be available, keeps the pool going. But as a smaller company, we don't always get the benefit of a prevailing wage job. The balance I'm struggling with with this is that I'm also, our council is in a unified front, we really want to do a lot of renovation in our city, that does require a lot of structural work, specifically our boulevard, and you can even see, if you drive down Cotelli, you can see the hospital now, has just done some work in the front, in the middle, center median. And the challenge that a small city like us has with this, and I'm not, I'm not fighting you on this, is, you know, we've got a certain amount of a CIP budget, and most of our projects in our seven-year CIP were bid at the market rate. CDBG was unique, it's not unique, but it is prevailing wage, but it's money that's granted to us, and under certain criteria. So we put those bids forward with a appropriate bid. And my only concern, and again, I'm not fighting it, is, you know, if, I think if we, if this happens, and we have a lot of big projects that we dream about in the city, we would probably need to go back to our seven-year CIP and re-forecast the total cost, you know, to maybe do it right, from your perspective. But, and, you know, we're super small, we don't have a lot of money to start with, so then we just got to start making those hard decisions of what now is in our twenty-year CIP versus our seven-year. And I just wanted to make you sensitive to that, and I'm sure you hear this a lot from some of the cities. Do you have anything that would help us with the understanding from your perspective?
Well, I think, first of all, I, the gentleman here on the end that was speaking, I think that we're talking about a service or a maintenance contract at this point, and that may be well exempt from prevailing wage anyways. I'm not real sure what projects that we're talking about. Generally speaking, if it's asphalt, if it's curb and gutter, you know, those are the kind of things that we're concerned about in addition to the building. And, and from where I, I mean, I'm a floor layer by trade, but I've been working for the building trade for fifteen years. And I don't think any city where it's Newport Beach, Los Alamos, or my home city of Anaheim, wants to venture out and hire contractors that's not paying prevailing wage. That stuff is, most of the asphalt, the folks that do all that, that's highly organized with operating engineers and the laborers' union, et cetera. And most of those folks are union to start with, and they're going to pay prevailing wage. I would hate to see the city, if it's service, if it's service.
You're okay.
Oriented, I think we're good to go with it, right? I'm not sure what service means here. If it's grass and trees, if it's not construction, the building trade is not concerned about. What we're concerned about is, the reason prevailing wage was put in the first place was local, using local contractors. Davis and Bacon was two senators that put it in, you know, nineteen thirties, and California adopted, and most of the other states adopted accordingly. And it was keep the local workers here, the local contractors here, et cetera, and not having out-of-area contractors come in. And that's what we're faced with now on a lot of publicly funded projects within, well, actually LA County, but I only cover the Orange County area.
Sure.
And that tends to bring in the outside contractors, because they know that there's no prevailing wage requirement. There's our concern. If it's a service, grass and trees or maintenance, as long as it's, you know, I hate seeing it concrete and sidewalks and stuff. it concrete and sidewalks and stuff, but, you know, I think that we're good with that. We're just, if you blanket, blanket exemption from prevailing wage is a major concern for us. And it's not, it's not a union issue. We're only the ones that police it. It's, it's a worker issue. How much do you want the cement mason to work on your concrete, your sidewalk? That's really what it boils down to.
Thank you, sir. I, I think I'm almost on there. Stephen, if, is there somewhere in the staff report that just says services, or is that a, because you know this inside and out, you're saying it's services? Because I didn't, I didn't see in there where I called it out specifically.
There's a paragraph that says, "As a cost-saving alternative, the superintendent suggests that the city obtain contract pricing for landscape and park maintenance." That's the intent of having this approved tonight, so we can move forward with that category only. We, at this time, staff doesn't find it necessary to do this in relationship to a curb and gutter project. We find it helpful in doing a maintenance project-
Okay.
...to make sure that the tree trimming contracts and/or landscape projects are exempt from prevailing wage.
Thank you.
That's our intent.
All right. Dean, did you have something?
I was going to say, do we, in the resolution, the 2014-9 resolution, do we specify in there the same that it's, I mean, I can understand what the gentleman is saying, but do we specify in there that it, you know, that it affects landscape, park maintenance, RFPs?
No, it, no, it doesn't, but if you look on Section 1, it leaves it a little open-ended for the city council on, where it has parentheses number three.
Uh huh.
"The payment of prevailing wage is separately authorized by the city council because the project is of a complexity and nature that the public interest would be best served." It's not a blanket approval for prevailing wage to be exempt on projects. Council can still require prevailing wage on certain jobs. And number three allows that.
Right.
And so we've left it open-ended for council to, at times-
Benefit.
...change it to a prevailing wage job.
Okay.
Warren?
So, I guess the question I have, and perhaps for the city attorney, is there a way to tighten this resolution so we do kind of limit it to those services that the, you know, staff is interested in doing instead of, the part about open-ended, we could forget, right? The next time this comes up and put something that we ought to really consider prevailing wage versus a service contract. So is there a way to tighten this up?
Yes. You could insert the words "other than construction contracts" after public works projects if you desired to, but that, that does tie your hands a little bit.
I understand.
If you wanted to, because as Stephen says, you could adopt this as is, and then if you have a construction contract that you wish to apply prevailing wage to, you could do that as part of the bid specs.
I think we're good with it the way it is.
Warren, anything else?
No, that's it.
I support it the way it is. It gives us the flexibility. I think the council will show good wisdom in making the decisions moving forward.
Richard, anything?
Second.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go with the recommended action. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed?
No.
One no, four ayes, motion passes. Okay, we move on to, excuse me for just a moment, Item 9A, ordinance repealing Chapter 9.14 of Title IX of Los Alamos Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
City Attorney will give the staff report on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In 2011, the city council adopted an ordinance at the request of the Orange County District Attorney's Office, which enacted prohibitions on registered sex offenders being present in city parks. We were not alone. Many cities in Orange County adopted very similar ordinances, and although we haven't enforced it, we had, there haven't been any arrests under that ordinance, it's on the books. There have been two court cases filed and appeals filed and heard in Orange County, or at least in our judicial district, I think they were both Orange County. And they challenged that ordinance on the basis, that type of ordinance, on the basis that state law occupies the entire field, that there's no room for local regulation, and that local jurisdictions are prohibited from enacting more stringent regulations than state law provides for. Planets in both of those cases were successful within the last seven or eight months, and appeals were, were heard, were decided, one published and one non-published, People versus Godinas, or Godinas rather, and People versus Wynn. And one was, they dealt with the same issue, and the same rationale applies to both. And in those cases, the court, the courts held that ordinances like ours are illegal under state law, unenforceable, illegal, et cetera. When this happened, when these cases were first issued in January, shortly after that, the city stopped enforcing its ordinance. We put something in the ordinance books, or ordinance online, indicating in red that it's not, not being enforced, pending further appeal to see whether the Supreme Court, the California Supreme Court, took the cases or not. The California Supreme Court did not take the cases, rejected both of them. So they are now the law of our district, the 4th appellate district, and there's, there's no wiggle room left. There's an organization which sent a letter to the mayor demanding that we repeal our ordinance. The lawyer called me, and I said, "We don't have to repeal it. We already have this on, you know, that says we're not enforcing it." And her position was, "It's on the books. It intimidates people from using the parks," registered sex offenders, "from going to the parks, from associating with their families, and whatever." And just the presence on the books, even if it's not being enforced, would give rise to liability. This lawyer has sued several cities, I think at least six, and either won or obtained settlements from each of those cities. And in every case, the cities have ended up ordered to pay attorney's fees, her attorney's fees, for filing the actions. There's also the possibility of civil rights damages on behalf of a plaintiff. So based on that, it's my recommendation that the council repeal its ordinance under threat of litigation. You don't really have a choice in terms of that unless we want to get sued. And so let's repeal it and move on. There are state laws that already protect children in parks from registered sex offenders, and those are capable of enforcement by our police department. And I'll answer any questions.
Great. I'll bring it back to the council. Any questions?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, just to reiterate, if we do not do this, it's a fait accompli that we'll be sued and lose, correct?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. So really, depending, our feelings on the matter really don't matter. It's more like a practical matter at this point.
Right. And, you know, and nobody, nobody wants to repeal an ordinance that's protecting the children.
Right.
But there's, there's no wiggle room here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Todd, can you tell us if you know the state law that's, you know, regarding this issue? Is it less restrictive than the one that we had in place that we're talking about removing?
Well, there's the, the, the law that restricts registered sex offenders from living within certain distances of schools, parks. And then there's also matters of probation and parole. Certain offenders will have certain conditions on their supervision that could prohibit them from being in certain places as well.
Okay. And if I remember, is it 500 feet? They can't live within 500 feet of a school or a park or?
2,000.
2,000? Wow, okay. Just for the public's knowledge, ours was that sex offenders were not allowed to go into our parks. Is that correct, Todd?
Correct.
Okay. So we were trying to take it a step further. What saddens me and actually sickens me is that, you know, they talk about the civil rights of these sex offenders, but what about the civil rights of everyone else who's impacted by this? So I'll, I'll bring it, anyone else in the council has anything to add? Warren?
So, yeah, I think that, just clarification, I think, Chief, we, we actually deliberated on this twice. The second time, we actually tightened up the language, and I think the restriction, restriction wasn't as broad as the language from the DA. Is that correct? If you recall, I think we brought it down to offenders convicted of child molestation, not just in general. I think that was how we tightened the thing up.
I don't recall that. Is that how?
I recall that, that we, that we narrowed the scope to specifically sex offenders. It was more broad when we first brought it.
Right. So, so anyways, I think that, you know, I think we, we tried to keep this as long as we could. I, I, you know, looking at the advice of the attorney, I think we have no choice. I understand that, but she was regrettable.
All right. Does, is there a motion? Anyone have a motion?
I have a motion to-
All right.
Move the ordinance as written.
All right. Motion, second by Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
That's the first reading, and we'll bring it back for second reading next month.
All right. We move on to Item 10A.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The next two items, under discussion items, new business under your city council agenda. These are items that are being bought back resulting from the budget discussions that we had. These are follow-up items. We had taken back a list of calendar items to bring back in the first two quarters of this fiscal year, with the priority being bringing these two items back, the fund balance reserve policy for the general fund and a policy for all of our internal service funds. So staff has put together a draft policy, our recommendations to the council for drafting this policy, and we are seeking feedback and direction at this point in time. And the director, interim Director of Administrative Services, Glenn Steinbrink, will give the presentation. And just to highlight, in 10A and 10B, as you're going through it, the policy itself is attached as an exhibit. So that's, that's what Glenn will be going through primarily, is what's included in the draft policy that's being brought forth by staff.
All right. Glenn, if you could, before we get started, for the public's understanding, can you differentiate between the fund balance policy for the general fund and then also the internal funds?
Okay. The, the general fund of the city is the discretionary fund of the city, meaning that all of the revenues that flow into the general fund are not restricted, can be used for any purpose that city council chooses to use those for. Whereas the internal service funds are set aside for specific purposes, and can be used only for the purposes that have been designated by city council.
Great, thank you.
I'll start with the general fund, and basically what this policy does is it memorializes the various categories of reserves that you established when you adopted the 2014-15 budget. And I really only want to address two, two of those items, and the first one being the reserve, the emergency reserve fund. It is our intention to bring back to city council each year in September, October time, the policy for the emergency reserves and also the PERS reserves, because there definitely will be changes every year in the amount that we've set aside for those reserves. The other reserves are not likely to change, but let me start with the emergency designation. We want to bring that back after the general fund budget is adopted, because it's really 25% of what the final adopted budget ends up being for the general fund. This year, you approved 3.124 million in emergency reserves, but then we made several cuts to the general fund as part of the budget workshops and then the final adoption of the budget, and we really don't need 3.123 anymore. We need just over $3 million. So we'll be bringing that one back in September or October to make a change in the amount. The second one is the PERS reserves. We will be receiving the actuarial report from PERS probably in September of this year. So we'd like to come back to council in September or October to make a change to the level of that reserve, as we'll do every year. A couple of things have happened with regards to the PERS reserves. One is, our timing was very good on some of the actions that we took with regards to our PERS reserves, in that two weeks after you adopted the budget, the Orange County grand jury issued a report on pensions in Orange County, and basically saying that there needs to be more transparency among the cities in Orange County with regards to their pension liabilities. We have to respond to that grand jury report by September 23rd, but among the things that they are recommending are to pay down your liabilities in PERS, one of which we did when we paid off the side fund liability, to work towards establishing funding at or above 80%, which is what we did when we established the PERS reserves, in addition to possibly using monies in the future to pay down liabilities. The second item is that about a week before the end of the fiscal year, I went to a PERS workshop over in Orange, and we already knew that the return on investment for PERS for the fiscal year ended June 3013 was 13.2%. And that has not yet been factored in, into any of the numbers that we've given you, because we don't have that actuarial report yet. I talked to the actuary for this city. He came down from Sacramento, and I asked him, "How's PERS doing this fiscal year, June 30, 2014?" He said, "The return on investment is in excess of 17% for the year ended June 3014." That's going to have an effect on the amount of money that you set aside in the PERS reserves in that when we brought this to you, we told you that the city is about 73% funded, and we needed that $3 million to get you up to 80%. And how that compares with other cities in the grand jury report is that cities are funded in Orange County anywhere from 59% to 77%. The city is funded at 73%, so we're at the top end of the, the funding for cities. They believe that overall, that when the report comes out for June 30, 2013, that the funding will jump from an average of about 69% to 73%. You're already at 73%. So I believe that the city has a very good chance of jumping from 73% to about 76 or 77%, which means you won't need all of this $3 million in this reserve. And fast forward one year from now, when we get the report in August of 2015, if in fact, their return on investment was 17%, that might put you over 80%. And so what we want to come back to council with in September or October is a decision on what you'd like to do with the money that isn't needed in the PERS reserve. It may be your choice to increase the funding to greater than 80%, maybe raise it to 85%. Next year, maybe raise it to 90%, whatever that percentage will be. And take any excess and use that excess to fund the other reserves, such as the emergency reserve, which will increase, likely increase every year, and the OPED reserve. But we want to give you that choice when the time comes. And so that's basically the report on the general fund reserves, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Great. I'll bring it back to council. Any questions? Dean?
I'd like to clarify-
I'd like to clarify one thing. And it may be just a typo on the first page of the staff report under discussion. You talk about Gadsby 54, is that Gadsby 45?
No, Gadsby 54 is the fund balance policy. That policy was brought to City Council in November 2011. This policy does not change what the City Council approved in November 2011 with regards to Gadsby 54. What Gadsby 54 did was it said, "You need to establish reserves in the general fund in five categories." Those categories are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. When that policy was adopted in November 2011, you really only had assigned and unassigned. You had one reserved, one reserve in assigned, and that was the $2.8 million emergency reserve. Everything else was unassigned. So, fast forward to now, I would say that what you're doing with your reserves now is you're putting everything in assigned still, including all the new reserves that we created. And only your unassigned will be in the category called unassigned. The other thing I want to add is that not any of these reserves are spendable reserves, with the exception of one, and that is the Los Alamos Boulevard rehabilitation. You set aside $200,000. You appropriated $40,000 for that project in the 14-15 budget. So the only portion of any of these general fund reserves that are currently spendable is the $40,000 that you've designated for Los Alamos Boulevard.
Okay, then the second part, in listening to what you said, and I'm looking at Exhibit A, we've talked about the emergency reserve being set at 25%. And I understand that that's 25% of whatever the general fund is.
Yeah, 25% of general fund appropriations.
Okay, and we use that number because that essentially would buy us 30 days if we're cut off from everything else.
Three months, would buy us three months.
Three months, okay.
Yeah.
If we were cut off from everything else because of some catastrophic issue.
That's correct.
Okay, so where you're talking about bringing back to us in September, an adjustment, all you're bringing back is the adjustment based on the final budget, not an adjustment or a change of the 25%.
That's correct.
So what we're doing tonight is, we're approving, in these amounts, we're approving the 25%. On the PERS, it's listed as a ratio near 80%, high or low. So we're not coming back in September to really change anything as we're adopting this policy tonight, but we may be changing the numbers as are allocated once some of those are determined from PERS and/or our final budget.
That's correct.
All right, okay, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll make the second on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, motion passes. Moving on to item 10B. A staff report, please.
Okay, the second item is basically the same thing for the internal service funds. It's a little more complicated than the general fund. Because, let me start and I'll take each one, one at a time, the garage fund. As I stated at the budget adoption, we have not set aside money for vehicle or equipment replacement for six years in the garage fund. We've only set aside money based on the allocations to departments for salaries and benefits and maintenance and operations, no money for capital outlay. I gave you as part of this agenda item, a schedule of all of the vehicles and equipment currently owned by the city in their inventory. As part of that, based upon the date that it was purchased, the expected useful life of the vehicle or the equipment, the original cost, we would need, right now, just based on the vehicle replacement policy that was approved by City Council years ago, we would need over $1 million to replace all of these vehicles on schedule. And we currently have maybe $30,000, $40,000 in the garage fund remaining for purchase of vehicles. Now for fiscal year 14-15, you did approve and gave additional monies for the purchase of three vehicles. And that's basically what's draining the remaining funds that are left in the garage fund for equipment. Moving forward to the 15-16 year, again, we would have about $30,000, $40,000. So what we're trying to do in this policy for the garage fund is to once again allocate monies to the departments to start building up a reserve to replace the vehicles and equipment that are on the schedule that you've received there. We don't have $1 million to do this and we don't have $200,000 a year as of this point to allocate to the departments. So we started it conservatively at $50,000 a year, which is the amount we could, it's a start. It's just a start. It's an amount that we felt that the city can afford to allocate to the other departments now, increase it by CPI each year. And if we have a dire need to replace a particular vehicle or piece of equipment that we don't have the money for, we'll just come back to council. All of these monies will always be brought back to council with a request as to what we're asking to replace. So it is, the capital outlay portion of this fund is non-spendable until City Council says that it's spendable. The technology replacement fund is the same thing, except that they're in much better shape financially than the garage fund. And so, we believe that we can just continue with the existing allocation to the departments for technology replacement and just increase it by CPI each year based upon increasing prices for computer technology. But not asking to allocate any more than what we are now, except for the CPI increase each year. Police capital expenditures, council approved $700,000 transfer from the general fund reserves to this fund in 14-15. We're using $139,000 of that for the CAD RMS system in fiscal year 14-15. That's the only portion of this that is spendable because the money's been appropriated by City Council. Our intent here is to replenish this fund over a 20-year period, $35,000 per year for 20 years, with again, a CPI inflator, to give us the funds that we need to replace the next CAD RMS system or the next 800 megahertz system. And finally, the facility streets, parks, and pool capital expenditures fund, City Council allocated $400,000 to this fund in 14-15. Currently, there is no portion of this fund that is spendable. No money has been appropriated out of this fund. Certain funds have been designated for certain capital projects, but the monies have not been appropriated. We'd like to allocate $40,000 per year to the departments, which is a 10-year replacement of the original $400,000, also to be increased each year based on CPI. And, but I think it's important, again, to note, the very last sentence of this policy is, "No funds shall be expended from the internal services fund without the express consent of City Council and approval of the appropriations therefore." And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, we'll bring it back to council, anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I guess, just really quick, Glenn, thank you, and city staff, I really appreciate this. I, the schedule, love it. The question that I have is, the $40,000 allocation to build up the amount, and now that we have a schedule, you could actually calculate by year how much we would need. Need versus actual allocation, are we, obviously we're short, so does this, how do you manage internally, because the council's not going to get involved in running the departments? Are you just going to jimmy around and hold yourself to the amount allocated per year? Or are you going to come in and ask for reserves to fund over amount the allocated? Because it probably would not be a fair burden right now, kind of a shock in the system to some of the departments when they're getting that technology fund, the internal service fund, et cetera. Again, it's all about fairness. How do we handle this as a policy now that we have established this?
Yeah, the vehicle replacement policy establishes when vehicles and equipment are to be replaced based on useful life. When we get to the end of that useful life, Tony has to make a decision as to whether we can continue to use that vehicle or that piece of equipment for a longer period of time and circumvent the requirements of the vehicle replacement policy. The fact is that while I say, based on the vehicle replacement policy, we need $1.2 million right now, in reality, we don't, because some of our vehicles and equipment are in pretty good shape and they don't need to be replaced, even though they've met their useful life according to the vehicle replacement policy. So we're going to try and live within our means as stated in the allocations to the departments. And if we have a critical need to replace a vehicle or a piece of equipment, we will come back to City Council with that request.
So the state of the city, we feel as department heads that we're fairly close. We're not coming out of the chute hobbling. We feel we can nip and tuck and go with the $40,000 and we're not going to be refereeing it from up here when we're totally uninformed. And I totally get it, $1.2 million over 10 years, not $1.2 tomorrow. So I, yeah, so expectation wise, I think what you're saying, I guess Brett and Glenn, is that correct?
Yes, and just to tap into what Glenn was saying, we also, as we're going to bring back annually, the actuarial report for PERS to the council. We'll review it with the council, we'll let you know what the impact is, we'll let you know how our 80% funding level, where we are, based on the returns from PERS, if that, if more is needed or if less is needed. And the council will weigh in and provide direction back to staff. So we, included in that flexibility is if we have additional PERS reserve and we have a need in the future for additional money to build up this fund, we would have that flexibility, but it would take the council action to do that.
Okay, so we kind of went a little bit over to, back to talking about PERS. And to me, I've never bought into the PERS thing to start with, but I, I'm on board. But, so I know that that could potentially have huge upside if the reality of a 17% ROI, which was negative 10 before, you know, now we're going to all of a sudden magically make up that shortfall somewhere, not just us, every city. I'm talking specifically, because this has been the battle line, right? The internal service fund for garage, for me, was I just wanted to know, if we're going to, you know, spend up to the $40,000 a year, then I'm on board and I'm glad that we've got this schedule. And, but if you're saying, "Hey, well look, you know, it's $40,000 a year, but PERS is doing good, so here's another 100 grand, and so it's 140 this year," that's, you're going to have a tough time with me, you know, down the road if, well, from back here. But if not, you're going to have a good time. But I would just say, I, finally, you know, we are there. I think this, if you guys are there and that's what you're saying, and the 40 grand, but it doesn't match your schedule, because I did kind of go through that and it looks like you're pretty significantly off knowing the answer at the back of the book, so, okay. Thank you, I'm done.
All right, next, Richard?
Well, Glenn, at the time of the, when we were discussing this fund, I asked you, in the first year or two of the garage fund, we are probably going to have to dip into reserves, and that's, I just want to make sure we're talking that.
Well, we are, but that's why I'm asking the question, because are we going the other way? Because we should have that discussion about properly starting the fund now, not just pass it and hope.
Well, that's the workshop, isn't it, where we decide what the policy's going to be with the overs...
Is that?
That's my understanding, because if that's not what we're doing, then I think we need to talk about it tonight. Because like, when I called in, I spoke with Glenn and Brett regarding that. I'm sorry, Richard.
Well, that's, but I agree, that's why I'm asking the question, is we're only putting $50,000 against roughly a $120,000 problem, if I take the million to over 10 years. So personally, I fully expect that in the next couple of years, while this fund gets built up, we will come back. We're not solving the problem tonight, okay? We're, we'd have to put, I believe, $100,000 at least.
We don't know what the amount is going to be. It depends upon the vehicles and equipment and how quickly they need to be replaced. But you did give us $100,000 for fiscal year 14-15 to replace three vehicles that were in critical need of replacement. And now you're giving us $40,000 a year in addition to that. We think we can live within that allocation at least through fiscal year 15-16. And what I think Brett's saying is if we do run into a critical need in the out years, that if we have some good years financially in the general fund, where our revenues are exceeding expenditures and we end up with some surplus, we might be able to move money from the PERS reserves into the emergency reserves and not have to take it out of current year revenues and expenses. And it might be, at that time, we might ask you if we could allocate some of that surplus from a good year fiscally to some other critical needs in the city, including the garage fund.
Okay, so, but basically you are saying that the garage fund is underfunded a little bit at this point?
They're definitely underfunded.
Okay.
Yeah, we need, right now, probably $200,000 a year. But again, that's based upon the vehicle replacement policy. And the vehicle replacement policy requires the replacement of vehicles based upon the passage of time and not based upon the condition of the vehicle at the time it reaches its useful life, the end of its useful life.
So Rich, I, that's what I was struggling, are we going off the policy, which says replace whether you got the money or not, which is what he's talking about? Or do we replace up to the 40 grand?
Or do we change the policy?
Yeah, and then is that the workshop you're talking about?
Yeah.
When is that?
This is really, like I mentioned today, Mayor Graham, here, that the workshop in terms of the items that we are going to bring forward through the budget process in the next two quarters, this, these are, this is the opportunity right now to talk about these two reserve policies and to get feedback and have the full discussion. It's a healthy discussion because it's $50,000 actually.
Yeah, it's 50.
It's $50,000 a year, we need to, we're going to work with, especially with the Public Works Superintendent, and Tony has a key role in monitoring the critical vehicles that we have and the critical vehicles that we will recommend replacing in future years. So 15-16 is the first year that we would have the $50,000 first charge to begin to build back up the garage fund. We are going to need additional funds to catch this up. And there's been, Glenn mentioned, there's been six years where there hasn't been any capital charge. There's been operating charges to all the departments and that has just kept the operating piece going, but there hasn't been the capital replacement and the capital charges. So this is, this is the beginning renewal of the garage fund and the operating charges. We're going to need to build them up, build them up with CPI, but we're going to need a combination over time to really replenish that fund.
Richard?
Could, could we get Exhibit B updated to what we think the actual might be? Based on where we are now, rather than, rather than using policy as a determinant, could we... could we say that just, and Tony, I'm not saying research this for hours. Look at the vehicle, say, okay, it says this year, I think I have two more years type of thing. You know, just your best guess, but just to try to put us, give us an actual number.
Do you estimate the life of the vehicles and equipment that are in the schedule?
From where we are now, instead of using the depreciation schedule in my mind. And, and let us see how big our problem is in year one. I mean, we recognize there's a problem, but I'd like to try and get a better number rather than just based on the policy. And like I said, it doesn't have to be a thesis. You know, just look at the vehicles. There's a lot of them here, I realize that. Look at the vehicles. See what it says, one year, if you think we have two years. If you think we have no more years, you know, we need to know that too. And then, and then we'll kind of know Brett where we are. What should that number really be to get us going now? We do realize we're making up for six years here.
Yeah, and it's, and it's now, it is a fully loaded schedule because Glenn and Tony have gone in and put the equipment, all the equipment in there too. So I mean, it's a really solid schedule in terms of an inventory of everything that we will need to replace over time.
Yeah, this is what we needed. I just think we could get a better number if we go to what we actually, where we think we are at this point, rather than coming back at the end of the year with the emergency.
That's what, Glenn, do you have a comment? And Tony, you want to talk about in terms of fine tuning the schedule?
Yes, we can definitely bring you something back on that at the workshop. To get you a number right now would be a little bit difficult, but there is some good news. In the, in the past, we have had a fund balance. And in the past four to five years, we have been, let's take Public Works for instance. We have been replacing trucks, okay? Our Public Works trucks, the good thing is like compare us to the city of Anaheim. We drive two to three miles to one end of town compared to 26. Okay, so there's some good news in this. Additionally, we did add for the first time since I've been here, 11 years, we've added all the equipment onto this, okay? Now, there is, as you're saying, there are some equipment on here that isn't used every single day, but is used enough to where, say the equipment's 20 years old, but it's still in good condition, okay? That's where our expertise comes in and says, hey, you know, we can keep continuing to use this. But for, for the purpose of, purpose of getting everything down on paper, we wanted to have it full compass. Everything is here. You guys, you can see exactly what we have. It may look dire, but in, in reality, we are a lot better off than it looks in black and white.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that helped you out.
Anything else, Richard?
Nothing.
Okay, my understanding was that when those items that we made the list of from the budget, that we were going to have workshops, I don't see a council meeting as a workshop, just FYI, moving forward. Usually workshops are done during the day or on a weekend where we kind of have a free ability to speak and, you know, bounce ideas off each other. This is a lot more structured than I would prefer. I'm not sure where you all are at, but this is not what I expected. And that's not your fault. Maybe we didn't make it clear to you what we were looking for. When you go back to item 10A, if you look at the reserve for emergencies, if I'd known or if I understood that this was not going to go to a workshop beyond this point, I would have addressed it then. And there are a couple of these, these designations that there could be a fluctuation, as Glenn said. The emergency reserve, it will go up and it will go down based on what we have as our general fund budget for the year. So my question to Glenn wasn't to Brett, if these go above a certain amount, what happens to that excess money? Like, let's say in a year, we have a better year and we have more money in the 25%. What do we do with that money? What's the policy? What did we, you know, do we apply it towards the garage fund? What do we do with it? There are lots of needs within the city and the community. And that's kind of where I was looking at before we moved forward with this is, let's have a mechanism based on all of our input of what we prioritize. Okay, first we want it to go to OPEB, let's just say. I know Troy doesn't support that. Let's just say, this is how we itemize them and we say, this is the most important, this is, you know, this follows, this follows. Because personally, on, on the garage fund, I agree, we've had, you know, Troy, since we came on, we've been telling them, no, 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 no. We got the whole duct tape story. We're going to get you a whole supply of that, so you're good, but.
Hey, don't forget the bailing wire.
The bailing wire, exactly. But what, what I would like to do, and I'm kind of think, Richard, you were going down the same path. I'm not sure you were, Troy, is kind of find a way to make us whole through this additional money if it's not needed somewhere else in those, you know, reserve items in the reserve. So for me, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with this unless we have, you know, all night to sit and hash out how we think this should look prioritizing where this, any additional monies would go from any of these categories. So to me, if voting on this tonight saying, okay, this is how it is and there's no changes to it, I'm not comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, we get, I mean, we want to get the feedback and direction from the council. It's a document that's fluid, that we can, we can modify, we can come back, we can get additional feedback from the council. We are going to come back in September. That may be a logical time to bring this back and fine tune it. And I think I'd sit through the budget process. I feel like we're about 90% of the way there. We got, we have a lot of work to do on that 10%, and this is part of that work. We, we can bring it back. And I think Glenn, September may be the appropriate time to bring it back when we get the actuarial report. We bring back the discussion to the council at that time.
Correct. I don't know when in September we're going to receive the actuarial report. If it's before the council meeting, then obviously we could bring it back at the September council meeting. If we receive it after that date in September, then it would be the October council meeting.
And here's the, here's the thing, we don't need to know what the amount is above. That's irrelevant. I'm talking about the policy of how we apply those overages, where we go from there. And if you remember at the last council meeting, when we had that projection of, okay, we can get this done within the next six months, let's say, whatever it was in the agenda report. And I said, I would rather address it more quickly. And the council all agreed, yes, we will find the time if we have to have special meetings. So really what I would prefer, if we can get the consensus of the council, let's get this done. Let's get all of those items. I don't care if it's a workshop in one day and at the end we walk out of there, hairs pulled out of our head, but we've got what we want from it. That's what I'm looking for. I don't want to wait till September. I don't know what the will of the council is, but I would prefer to address this in August.
And what we're trying to do is, and Wendy will poll the council again, it worked, I think it worked out well. We had a study session, a workshop on the individual joint use agreements today at 4 o'clock. We can do these workshops and the items that we're going to bring forward at an earlier time, 4 o'clock, if the council is available and present the information to the council. We have a couple of the items that were on the list planned for the August meeting. Right now, we're trying to put that together in terms of presentations by the departments on their individual, a department presentation. This is what the department does. This is what the staffing level is. This is what the budget is for this fiscal year. Do a PowerPoint and those are the budget, department budget items on the list. We also are trying to put together a report on the future of cable that was on the list. And we would bring that as part of a workshop or an earlier item than just on the regular agenda. So we could also add, depending on the timing, I mean, we need to, staff needs time to put it all together too. That's the other piece of it. But we put it together and bring it back in an earlier time or at a different time than the regular council meeting.
Right. The only problem with, for me, when we have it before a council meeting is if we're not done with it, we only have a certain amount of time. And I don't know that these items or anything that we're going to work through very quickly. I think they can be very detailed sometimes. And so for me, again, will of the council, I'd prefer to do one on a day that's not a council meeting so that we have ample time and we're not rushed and we can really get a good product that we can be proud of. And the sooner, the better. I understand that staff has to come up with the agenda items. But if you could, if you would shoot the council a list of the items that we ask to be brought forward and maybe Wendy, we can poll them to see which ones we think are the most important. And then if we can get two or three in a one day study session, maybe it's on a Saturday. I don't know what the, you know, council's availability is, but.
My suggestion, I thought, what I thought we were going to do was do this on the off Mondays when we used to have the second meeting, the first Monday of the month. And we have about eight subjects, so if we knocked off three, we'd be done in, we'd be done in, you know, three months maximum, maybe two. And just depending on how much we can handle and, and set a timeframe. But, you know, be here from, from 6:00 to 9:00 or something like that. And I think everybody kind of agreed to that without knowing the specific dates.
Yeah, and we can work with, and we'll work with Wendy and poll the council on dates and coordinate it with the timing of preparing the information from a staff perspective. And we can have it on a off Monday or a different time. We'll work on the dates and the times.
Are you looking at a council meeting or more of an informal?
No, I'm talking at a roundtable discussion where we can just shoot ideas out. There's not the, okay, Troy, you go ahead and speak. Okay, Rich, do you have anything? I want it to be more of a working group as opposed to.
Yeah, like we did with the budget workshop itself, the roundtable. We can set that up.
Okay, great. Dean?
I'm confused. Because we're talking about a policy and, and some of the stuff in this 10B that we're talking about, I'm not comfortable with going forward. And you're talking about already figuring out what we're going to do with projected monies that we won't know anything about until September and, and that particular process. City manager's talking about having the departments come in and tell us what they do. And I think part of that is a result of me bringing that up at the budget because in the past, we would have the department come forward and kind of say, here's what we've accomplished this year. Here's what we're asking for this coming year. And we had an opportunity to dialogue and, and help them, if that was the case, determine what priorities were. Frankly, to have the city departments come forward in September, October, November, to me is, is a waste of my time. If we're going to be talking about preparing for the 15, 16 budget, then I think it is appropriate to figure out exactly what they are accomplishing, what their direction is, what their, their needs and or wants are for the coming year so that we can help work from the standpoint of the budget and the process. You know, when, when we were talking earlier about the garage fund, looking at the past budget, looking at what we were given that said, here's what, what was budgeted. Here's what we project to end June 30th with. Here's the upcoming budget and here's what we would project for the end of the 14, 15 year. And I said this during the session, particularly with regards to the vehicles. The departments were being charged, as I understood it, a percentage going forward based on the number of vehicles that they had had. As an example, if you look at Exhibit B, and, and I realize this was put together and I appreciate, Tony, you bring in the thing forward because again, it's something we've needed. But in 2016, we're going to replace all the police cars based on this list. Now, okay, where's that hit coming from? It's almost the same thing with the police department capital expenditures fund. If the departments are paying a percentage, and I don't see how we're allocating 50,000 dollars to the garage fund. And I think that's what you were talking about when you were saying 40. So we're going to allocate 50,000 to the garage fund. Yet in the 15, the 14, 15 fiscal year, how many vehicles are we really looking at that are having to be done? What was done before, I don't know if that was done out of this year's fund going forward or last year's fund. But at some particular point, back when they switched from Crown Vix to, to the Dodge Chargers, we were told Ford's not making police pursuit vehicles anymore, so there won't be any more Crown Vix. Now, that's not true. So we were fed some information and we went 147 horsepower more to go to the Dodge Chargers for a two mile city or a four mile city and more expense in the process. I get that and I understand that. But originally, the plan was two cars essentially every, every year. And over a three-year period, everything would be replaced in the process. Well, we had two of them total in one year, so that threw the, threw the whole process completely out. Are the departments being charged based on the vehicles, the, the capital items that they have? Are they being charged, if I've got five vehicles that are good for five years, am I being charged percentage on each of those five vehicles?
No, it's, as we discussed, this is a replenishment and a rebuilding of the garage fund. And so the 50,000 dollars that will start in 15, 16 is a beginning to build that back up.
I get that.
And that's where, that's where we are right now. The 14, 15 fiscal year, as Glenn had mentioned, there are vehicles that the council had approved through the budget process to replace the critical vehicles. We've drawn down the garage fund to 30 or 40,000 dollars total. We need 1.2 million dollars to build it back up.
That's hypothetical. That's assuming that you're going to replace them all at the same time and that's not.
That, yeah, right. It's just, it's just the replacement, the replacement cost of all of the vehicles and the equipment that we have. It's an inventory of what we have.
And I get that. So the 1.2 million dollars is really more a hypothetical number unless somebody drops a bomb and wipes out all of our vehicles in one fell swoop. Not going to happen.
Well, it's not. It's just an estimate of the replacement cost of the current vehicles and equipment.
I understand, but not all of that's being replaced this year or next year. There's certain numbers going through. So we're putting 15,000 or 50,000 in this to get it started. How are we going to build that 50,000? Where's that money coming from? Is it coming from the departments? In other words, if I've, if I've got a police vehicle, and I'm not picking on police, it's just an easier target. And, and a police vehicle is 37,000 dollars and it's going to last for five years. So we know that we're going to have, we're going to have to be setting aside a portion of that 37,000 dollars every year so that in six years, if that's the life expectancy, five years, that money's going to be there. That was the purpose of the garage fund.
Right, and that's when, that's when it gets up to a healthy level to where we actually, you know, depending on the estimated life of the vehicle, we would, and to be able to appropriately set aside enough for the replacement, we need much more than 50,000 dollars. So we need to get to a level and build that.
I understand that. The point I'm getting at is, are the departments being charged in this year's? The council saying, okay, we're going to put 50,000 into the bank for this particular fund. Are the departments moving forward this year, setting aside prorations toward the vehicles that they have assigned to them so that there will be more money, more money next year? Or in, in the 2015, 16 year, are we going to come back and say, we need another 50 grand this year? Actually, we need 100 grand this year to help bring that fund back up. Where's that money coming from?
We do, it would come from a combination, we've talked about either a combination of if there's a surplus in one fiscal year. I mean, it's part of the policy discussion that the council needs to adopt to finalize this. But it could come from surplus, if there is a surplus. That surplus could go into the emergency reserve, the 25% first, which would free up money to deposit into the garage fund. So we need to build up the garage fund from a combination of sources over time. This 50,000 dollars is set to begin in fiscal year 15, 16. We're set for 14, 15 in terms of operating charges, but we're not in 14, 15 yet building that back up. We're starting that in 15, 16.
I understand. So then in, in the 15, 16 year, the departments are going to have a specific number, 20 bucks a year.
We will allocate, we will set up a schedule to allocate it among the departments. I mean, it's, it's not going to be enough until we get to that 200,000 level to where it's specifically set aside for those vehicles in that department, but we will build that up over time.
But Dean, I gotta say, because I think this is where Jerry was going, is that's why I think, and I'm kind of on board, the sense of urgency is we can't give them an allocation amount. Rich said, hey, you guys, I want a better amount. My first reaction was the math doesn't work. And then Rich is like, hey, could you guys do, you know, go tell us what the real schedule is? And then Jerry's like, hey, and I need to do it fairly quickly and let's do it around the table. I think you're starting that discussion, but I think it is, there's, it's, that, there's a lot to this. And I, and until we can give the city, you know, the city, you know, staff more clear direction, I'm not sure what they plan for the allocation. All they got is 50,000 in the bank and I promise that we're going to get to it as soon as possible.
I understand that and respect the fact that we're taking a step. And it's a positive step that apparently we didn't take for the last six years.
Well, I, you know, Tony clarified this and thank you. I, I will not take, I think it's an unfair hit to the council to say that we haven't done it for six years. We have funded requirements as they were needed. Fairness, Dean, the issue that we had, did they get the full allocation? We, at a minimum, took the allocation for operations and maintenance. And there was a huge, about $400,000 to $600,000. We have now spent that down, but we didn't ever tax them. The real challenge, whatever, this is why it's so urgent where I'm with Jerry, is that the problem is, whatever that number is, if it's 50 from here forward, on top of the 50 we fund, whatever that is, the department's got to suck that up in an allocation that they didn't have last year.
And that's all I'm asking, is this, is this truly the direction we're going where, you know, and I worked at a city for 12, 13 years where we had to rent everything, in theory, from the city. We were our own little business. And we had to justify everything that we needed. And we rented a four-door file cabinet, cost me 14 bucks. And after hour and a half discussion on it, I said, I don't want the file cabinet anymore. Keep your 14 bucks. But that was the concept going forward. And if that's the direction staff understands, then I'm on board from that standpoint.
But they didn't understand, yeah.
Well, here's the thing. This is, this is what, we're getting, we're getting off course from what this was supposed to be. And what I was saying is, when we brought this forward, Dean, we said we wanted a workshop. This is not a workshop. And they're wanting us to pass this without doing the workshop prior to, which is what I think we had intended. So if there are things that you're not comfortable with in this, then I say we continue it until we have the workshop and we can bring forward the complete product. Is that good for you?
That's, that's good. If, maybe we do each one of these at a point. Because we've taken, we know the 800,000-
800 megahertz.
800 megahertz thing is doing and we're going to have to replace the CAD system. So essentially, we've taken from the existing reserves and set up a buffer of 700,000. And what I'm being told was, the police are going to be paying that back at 35,000 a year so that it stays at 700,000 or it ultimately gets at 700,000, which is what I brought up before about the council 20 years from now, at least having something allocated. My concern is that that doesn't define enough what that 700,000 is going to be or the intended use of it.
Great. So, and I don't think, Dean, we can know that until we get to that point in time. What we're saying is, we're going to keep this savings account, knowing that there will be capital expenditures, like you said, in the future, that we're not, we're not ready for. We don't want to be caught, you know, with our proverbial pants down again. So we want to make sure that we start the savings account. And Glenn, that's the way I look at this from a real remedial level, is look, we know that down the line, we want to buy this piece of property and it's going to cost this much. So we're going to save this much a year and, and then we'll have the money for that. Now, we don't have anything tangible to link it to, but we know that there's going to be a purpose for it down the line. So really, why don't we, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to try and move this forward, to continue this until the next meeting, as long as we have had our workshop and we have addressed these issues, like Dean said, piece by piece.
I'll say it.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, great.
So just a point, so we are talking 10B and 10B only. So we kind of circled back and started talking about 10A.
Well, the reason I said that, Warren, and I apologize, is because my understanding was, these things would still be discussed at the workshop. But now Brett said tonight, well, if you want to talk about that, now is the time. I think that's something the council can take up.
So, so, so we really just addressed 10B.
Yeah.
The garage fund, the other internal funds, correct? Because 10A's behind us, right?
Right.
I just want to, I'm seeking clarification because-
Well, what I'd like to do, though, is readdress 10A.
I think he's going for a vote for reconsideration.
Yes. So I think we want to reconsider 10A.
And I would support that if that's your motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reconsider 10A, to be brought back at the next council meeting, if we are able to get through each of these items at our workshops. And hopefully, gentlemen, we can do this in an expeditious manner. I hope you'll be available because, you know, Rich and Troy have worked so hard with Glenn and you guys have done such a phenomenal job of creating these internal funds. I just think that we need to get the policies in place to protect them.
Glenn, one, mention one thing.
Okay, and Glenn?
Just a couple of quick comments, and that is, we can't not bring you back anything on 10A until we receive the actuarial from PERS, because I won't have any changes to this policy by the next meeting.
You're not changing the policy.
Dean, if you-
The policy was purposely vague in terms of the dollar amount for the emergency reserve and the PERS reserves and the unassigned reserves. I didn't put dollar amounts in there purposely because I knew we'd be bringing that policy back to city council in September or October, when I could give you dollar amounts to put in there. And what I'm saying is, I can't have dollar amounts for you by the next council meeting because they won't be available until September.
Right. And I think what I was saying earlier, and if I'm wrong, I'll defer to you, it's not the amount that I'm looking for. It's if there's an amount above and beyond, which you're saying that there could be a considerable amount, how do we want to prioritize the moving of that money? Or do we want to leave it where it's at? That's more what I want to discuss at the workshop.
And I understand, but I think it's easier to decide where you want to put that money if you know what that surplus is, especially with regards to the PERS.
I get that. But if we have, if we have a prioritization list of, say, we want to fund the vehicles, you know, through the garage fund at a higher dollar amount, we have to say to ourselves, we're consciously making the decision to make that priority one because we're so far behind. And so I'm not saying a dollar amount is going to go in that place. I'm just saying, we've got to sit down and prioritize and figure out what we collectively think needs our attention first. And then, when you bring us the numbers, then we can say, okay, of that amount, because I think when we talked earlier today, it was a pretty considerable amount that we might be getting back. Is that correct?
Based on an estimate, yes, I believe it will be.
Yes.
I can't give you an exact dollar amount, but I believe it will be substantial.
Right. And, and so, in that, there's the potential for us to have some flexibility. But when we get those dollar amounts, I want us to already have the policy in place or the prioritization in place. So then all we got to say is, okay, it's $500,000. We want to give 100,000 to the garage fund. We want to give another 100,000 to the police fund and the internal funds. It's not the dollar amount that I'm worried about. I see, Dean, it's not the dollar amount, it's just our preference, really.
Okay.
Okay? If that's okay, if you don't-
Oh, no, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that I won't have any changes for you with regards to the dollar amount of these reserves by the next meeting.
Right. I understand that. And you have done a phenomenal job. Thank you so very much. Dean, you had something you wanted to add?
My question is, what Exhibit A did was establish percentages. That's not going to change.
It does, it does, Dean.
How does it change?
The percentage doesn't change.
Well, the, yeah, dollar amount could-
Change the percentage will-
But the percent doesn't change. We, for example, the reserve on emergency says 25% of the general fund.
Right.
That's the policy. What will change is, whatever the general fund is, by adopting 10A, we've established what those percentages are going to be. Nothing changes in this.
But where does the excess money go? I think that's your-
Yeah, the roundtable, the roundtable discussion can involve, it can involve the prioritization of where the council as a whole wants to put additional money.
That part I agree. And it may be worse. It may be that we don't have enough to do that. And we've got to figure out what to do. But what we've established with-
So, I'm sorry, Dean.
Okay, I'm, we've got too many discussions going. All I'm saying is, is the percentages that we got here, percentage, we're going to set aside 25% of this, approximately 80% of that. What we adopted on 10A is good. It's when those, when the dollars change to match those percentages, that's a different discussion.
Right. But what Brett is saying earlier tonight, and I was on the same page as you when I called in earlier and we discussed it, I thought that's what we were saying. But Brett's saying, if you want to have a conversation about if there is a surplus because of the fluctuation of the amount of the budget, okay, then you have to be talking about that tonight. I'm not, I'm not ready to have that discussion tonight because we haven't sat down as a council to prioritize the policy of how we want to handle any surplus.
To me, that would be another policy. Why do we have to put that into, into the discussion here on Exhibit A?
I think what the, what the mayor is saying, and I think Councilmember Edgar is saying, we can have a budget workshop, a roundtable discussion, which, and Glenn is saying, we don't have, while we won't have the numbers yet on the actuarial report, we won't know exactly what the 80% funding level is, but we can talk about a prioritization. If, if we have a surplus, we can do a what if. If we have a surplus at the end of any fiscal year, what is the priority of where the council wants to put that? Do you want to put it first in to replenish the 25% reserve? That 25% reserve has been established, council has weighed in, that 25% has been established. That 80% has been established. But if we have a surplus, what's the prioritization of where that will go? Does it, do you, if we also, down the line, when we get the PERS information, if we have additional monies, which we will, in PERS, for at least this fiscal year, probably next fiscal year, what would be the prioritization of where the council would want to put that? 25%? Do you want to put it in the garage fund? I mean, these are all items for discussion at a workshop, appropriate at a workshop.
Okay. Warren, you had something?
So, so I think, so back to 10A, the reserve policy, without that, if we were to reconsider and table that, then there really is no surplus above or below 25%, because we haven't established anything then. Is that correct? If I ask, what's the number, Glenn? And you say, there's no 25%, we just rescind it, right? If we reconsider item 10A?
Yeah, I could give you-
But, but if, okay, we've passed it, right? It's passed and it's 25%, 80% funding. But if we, if we reconsider it and rescind it, then there is no, there is no policy though, so there is no surplus above or beyond, above or below 25%, correct?
Correct.
So, so I think, I think the part is, we do need, I think, as Councilmember Gross says, it's just a number. It's a percentage of a total number, which, which will fluctuate for each fiscal year, different numbers. I guess the real question is, what happens when we're short? And we're going to have the opposite question, saying, who are we going to take money from to replenish that 25%? That's a different issue. Right now, we're kind of in good shape, but-
Can I ask a question and maybe you can clarify for me? The way I looked at it is, in a year where we have a budget that does very well, and so the 25% of that budget is this amount, and then we have a year that's lower, so 25% of that total budget is less than this. So the amount would differ, correct? It would go down. So there would be a surplus. That's what I'm talking about. So we did, Wendy, we took a vote to, I'm just trying to clarify. We took a vote to continue both these items or to readdress these? No? Okay, so let's-
So if, my, my point is, Mayor, if we reconsider 10A and do not establish 25%, then there is no number to compare. There is no surplus above or below 25%, because 25% won't exist if we reconsider it.
Well, maybe not for this year, but this is moving forward as a policy, correct?
And maybe, just a suggestion, maybe you leave 10A alone and the action that's been taken, but consider that policy as you're doing the roundtable discussion, because you're doing the roundtable-
Well, that's what I thought we were doing, but you said earlier, if that's, if you want to talk about, tonight is the night you do it.
I said that. But I mean, you also can have a workshop. We can have additional meetings to talk about this.
Okay.
And so, consider leaving your 10A, the action that you took on 10A, coming back with the budget workshop and prioritizing, you know, doing the what-if scenario. We can kick around the what-if scenarios. We can say, if we have a surplus, this is where you want to put it first. If we don't have a surplus, we can talk about that, too. We can talk about the garage fund and how we want to build that up over time. And if that's a prioritization, the 25% possibly first, the garage fund possibly second, depending on the critical nature. But all of this would be appropriate for a budget workshop and keeping 10A intact, because I think you need to have the baseline of your 25% and your 80% that we've talked about through the whole-
I agree with that.
Right. Well, I was going based on what you said. If you, if you realize, I voted yes on this, and then you said, if you want to have the conversation, now's the time. So, okay, so I'm going to poll the council. You want to leave 10A as is?
Yes.
Troy? Yes? I already know you two. Okay, great. So we're going to leave 10A as is. And then we're going to go to, we already did that, didn't we? We continued 10B.
I don't think they voted on it, did they? We did?
Yeah, we already voted on it. And now we're going to go to council comments. If you don't mind, can I start first tonight, gentlemen? I received an email, and for those of you who might be watching and think that I'm playing with my phone, that's not the case. I was trying to bring up an email that I received from a mother of a Marine who has been arrested in Mexico. Her name is Jill Tamarisi. Her son's name is Andrew. And the situation was, her son is a Marine. He's a decorated veteran. He's only 25 years old. He's been given special awards for saving people in his, in his platoon. And this gentleman had moved here from Florida, moved to San Diego, had not found his permanent housing yet. So in his vehicle, he had all of his possessions, which included weapons that he had legally purchased here in the United States. And I'm not familiar with this, but as the email says, as he was getting on the freeway, it's very confusing down in San Diego, and it took him straight on to the highway that leads you into Mexico. And there's a picture on this email that shows there's huge walls. There's no way to turn around or get off the freeway. So anyways, he called 911, asked for help, to no avail. He approached the border and informed the border guards, you know, I wasn't intending to go to Mexico. I have weapons in my car. I'm a military officer. Can I just turn around? I didn't even have any intent to go into Mexico. They refused to allow him to do that. And once he got into Mexico, they arrested him for having weapons, which is illegal. He was arrested, I believe, on March 31st and has been detained to this date. His mother has asked for signatures of support to President Obama to ask for his help to intervene. But also, there are insurmountable costs for his legal defense, which the United States government is not helping him, helping them with. So I would just like to put out a personal challenge for those of you who are interested. I'm not a person of great means. So what I did is I sold some things that I had, and I am going to make a donation to this family for $200,000. And I'd like to challenge any of the council members who feel so led to do that. And I'd like to even extend it out to all elected officials. This is our American son. And when he was down there for the first 35 days, they had a four-point restraint on him. His life was threatened every day by the inmates, but in addition to that, even by the guards that are there. He's been since moved to solitary confinement at a different location. But as you can imagine, it's extremely distressing to his mother. And, and for him, I can't imagine what his, what his hope level would be, knowing that his government is not having his back when he's fought to protect our freedoms and give us the right to all the wonderful things we have here in America. So it's just a challenge to those of you who are interested. And again, I'd like to extend that challenge. Wendy, maybe we can get together and you can help me put together a letter of a challenge to our local officials. But if you feel moved to be a part of this, I've reached out to a group of women who are extremely motivated. We're going to be putting together some kind of a fundraiser, hopefully very quickly. And I'll be announcing that potentially at the next council meeting so that we can reach out to this family and be of service to them. And with that, I attended vector control, not this month, but last month. And the dates that it falls, it's, you know, after our council meeting. So I wanted to report out on that. And there were some other events that I attended in the city, but this was really my first and foremost item for tonight. And I will go ahead and defer the rest of the time to the other council members. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go ahead and go. So I have not much to report. I did attend the Orange County Fire Authority meeting last month, and there's a meeting coming up this Thursday. I am on the ad hoc committee to help select the next chief. So I've been working with that. And then they're standing up a new HR committee that I'm trying to get more involved with as well. So that's kind of what I had to report. And I'll just turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Who'd like to go next?
I'll go just real quick. Orange County Sand District, one of my final acts is I did the performance evaluation for a general manager, also kind of debris. So Rich is fully engaged in the Sand District. One of the items of kind of loose business that I just wanted to have entered into the minutes is that, you know, we've made a conscious decision to not change the delegation of who's on the board until the end of the year, when we do the appointments. So I guess officially, even though we've done all this, I, it just has an implication on my Form 700 for leaving office. So thank you for the emails, and I think we've clarified that. The other thing I wanted to announce today, the governor signed SB 946, which was the bill that we pushed through the Sand District. And I know council member Kusamoto had some ideas and thoughts. And Warren, I would just love to get with you and go through anything, any ideas you had and the implications of that bill potentially within this area. Also, attended the Fourth of July. I, you know, I will say, I sometimes am somewhat insensitive to, because I've never been in Carrier Road to watch the event. I did, I go to the gym over there, I see a lot of people, actually did come up to me that, and they weren't the people in this room, and were saying, you know, Troy, we couldn't even see it. It's interesting, I didn't go the last year, but I went this year. So I, this is the first time I went where it was actually moved. Loved it because it was on concrete. But, you know, the show, whether it was high enough, you know, some of the things that I think, Jerry, because a lot of these folks you do know, is that the amount is jointly shared between Cypress and LaSalle. And I think when you've tried to talk about this in the past, we were past the point where we could get everybody to agree. But I don't know, I, I think bigger picture, I, I would be supportive to talk more about this, and I'm probably more apt to, to talk about it, you know, to help that than to get safe and sane fireworks back, just because I think being on the fire authority before and now, Warren, I know you, I just, I, you know, all the fire chiefs, they really have an issue with how much happens when the safe and sane fireworks are back in the community. So I will tell you again, I didn't get formal letters with signatures, but I did get more people than I thought would have a concern with fireworks. So the other thing, went to the Joint Forces Training Base Building Memorialization with council member Kusamoto and, and council member Gross. Great event to see that building memorialized on behalf of the soldier that actually died in 2003. And so they're just getting to the point to, to do that, and I thought that was great. I, I think that's all I have at this point, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Next, Rich?
Sure. Prime Minister, the Fourth of July, got a chance to speak.
Thank you.
But that was, that was actually nice. And I, you know, so the concept of what we do over there on the Fourth of July is, is to get four cities and Rossmore to cooperate. It's actually a, you know, a feather in everybody's cap, and hopefully be able to keep it going.
Is that it? Okay, great. Dean?
I have most of the things that I have attended on the Facebook's page, which is Let's Fix, Let's Fix. Which is losal.net. You listening to that?
You missed it.
Never mind. And I would advise the council, too, that prior to our next council meeting on August the 10th is the dedication of the new 40th Infantry Headquarters. And prior to that will be a change of command for incoming Major General Haskins, who will be replacing Major General Jones.